Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome each one here this morning for our workshop. And at this time, I do not have any public input cards.
Can I pull it out and give it to you?
We're going to penalize you.
All right. First, I'd like to say that I looked through all the presentations. Thank you for including the presentations before the meeting so that we knew what the subject was. And secondly, there have been in the past some different varying creative artistic approaches to presentations that scrambled my mind. And this is very good. All of them were very clear. They were in black and white and everything. And so, I just wanted to commend you because in the past, like I said, there's been some that's been so hard to read because of the clashes of colors and everything else. This is a great improvement. The legislative priorities that you're going to discuss, they were all related to funding without deadlines or projected wants or priorities. Now, I realize that in some cases, you can't nail that all down. But, and hopefully, you're going to discuss priorities. And you're also, I bet, there's some people here that may know exactly what their target is for that. But as an observer looking at that, that's what I'm encouraging is I hope these aren't just left as vague generalities and they are going to be tightened up even if it's internally so that you know, because they didn't even really explain what the current position is, what you're lacking. It just said, "We want funding." And almost every one of them says, "Funding, funding, funding, funding." What I would suggest also is probably you ought to have something on there about some desire to regulatory changes, not related to funding. But, you know, the teachers are bogged down in a lot of things and there wasn't anything in there about regulatory changes. And, you know, after watching what Trump has done, just a phenomenal change because, and of course, that's out of your control, but maybe you could work at trying to get some of these oppressive regulations that affect you rolled back. Maybe it doesn't happen right away, but work at it. Mr. Mock's presentation, he did a lot of work on that. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. The only thing I think is that he left out one funding idea, and that's that you ought to sell naming rights to his audits. And I think that maybe you ought to have, allow a bank, you know, or an accounting firm or somebody else sponsor some of these audits to continue this funding idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to our topics, our first one is 3.01. You got everybody here?
Yes.
All right. Ray Robinson, Legislative Updates and Priorities. Robert Stewart from Senior Government Affairs Consultant. Ray Robinson.
I'm Katie.
Good morning.
I'm Katie Flory.
You're Katie?
Yes, you guys.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Robert Stewart, Ray Robinson, Katie Flory from my team also here with me. Chris Carmody from our team is also en route, but if we get done in time, he may or may not get here in time. But we're grateful for you guys having us today. We are, of course, incredibly grateful for the partnership that we enjoy with the county and for the opportunity to represent you in Tallahassee and to carry your message up there. Just as a bit of an opener, and then I'd love to get into the draft priorities and then answer any questions that you as a board might have. But, of course, we now have an election that's behind us. We have roughly 50 new members of the Florida House of Representatives, brand-new members never served before. We have about 10 new members of the Florida Senate. The way the elections ultimately shaped out in terms of partisan nature of the majority and minority of the House of Representatives, the Democrats picked up seven seats statewide in the Florida House, but you still have a pretty overwhelming majority for the Republican Party in the House. Speaker Oliva took over as Speaker last week during, two weeks ago, I should say, during organizational session. Seventy-four, seventy-five members of the 120-member House are Republicans in the Senate. There was a net pickup of one seat for the Democrats, and that was a seat in Tampa. Senator Dana Young was defeated by former House Minority Leader Janet Cruz, and that was the one pickup in the Senate. So you've got a 23 to 17 breakdown, Republicans, the Democrats in the Florida Senate. And President Galvano has taken over and now will run that ship. Committee assignments are beginning to roll out, particularly the chairmanships. So you have chairs of the overarching policy and appropriations committees that have rolled out in both chambers. And you'll start to see more of the rank-and-file members be filled into those committees, really probably this week and next week, before they get into their first committee meeting week, which is scheduled for the week of December the 10th, which is next week. And so, that's sort of a lay of the land of where we are. Of course, the last session, we had some great success on the Destination Lake allocation of funds for $866,000 for that program. And then, of course, the compression adjustment, which was funded for the first time in many years by the legislature, $56 million statewide appropriation, which, correct me, Superintendent, I think it was 1.3?
Two.
Oh, 2.8. Well, even better. That gave us a raise. There you go. For Lake County, which was a great win. And our hope, obviously, leading into this next session is that they can make that permanent in a recurring basis so that districts like Lake, which fall below the statewide average for FAFP, can receive that bump. So that's kind of a general overview. And, Mr. Chairman, members, it's obviously great to be with you today, and thanks for the opportunity to continue serving you.
Superintendent, do you have any?
I had sent our draft legislative priorities. If you recall, I brought these a while back, and you said you really wanted to wait until after the election. And that was also the recommendation of Ray Robinson, let's come back together once we knew what the landscape was in Tallahassee and go through these and look at them. So, of course, you've had some time to look at them. I know you had some initial comments about them. One of the things that I had asked Robert and his team to do was to look at them, provide some guidance and feedback. And then, as you maybe have some other priorities that you want to add, kind of give us some direction as to those things that we think are most practical to bring before legislative delegation in the coming days. So, I don't know if you have any feedback on the initial draft?
Yeah, I think, in going to what we were able to accomplish last year on Destination Lake, I will tell you that if there's one lasting legacy of the Adam Putnam campaign for governor, it is the focus on workforce training and apprenticeship programs and getting that type of training back into our high schools and even into our middle schools. When his campaign ended after the primary, it's a topic that both leading candidates or both of the party nominees picked up as something that needs to be done, focusing on workforce training and getting those programs back into our schools. And so, y'all are really at a leading edge of that and something that maybe we can build upon. The incoming governor-elect, Ron DeSantis, has made that a focal point, both of his campaign and of his transition. And so, I think you'll see a lot of focus on that, maybe some new money associated with that. I know it's a priority of not only policymakers but also of industry, where groups like the home builders and the associated builders and contractors need workers. And finding them and identifying them at a younger age, getting them skilled training, heck, you can come out of high school making $80,000 a year as a welder right now. But getting those training into place and getting those students identified and having them know what their options are really is beginning to be a piece of the school choice movement that hadn't been talked about in years past. But it is something that I think you're going to see a height and focus of. That's something for us to potentially build on. Of course, we talked about the compression adjustment and making that permanent. And then, on the school safety side in particular, and I'll speak to that one, I do think in the year ahead, you will see a, what in legislative parlance is referred to as a glitch bill, on the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Act, which we obviously watched pass last year and the implementation of that, which has been a challenge statewide. And there's still a relatively large, in state terms, sizable pot of money, sitting aside for what was the Guardian program for the districts that didn't opt into that. Governor Scott, that was the one piece of the bill that he was not in favor of, but wasn't going to veto the entire bill over that piece. And he asked the legislature, even at the time of signing the bill, that if districts don't opt into this, reallocate that money to hire more school resource officers. And they haven't done that yet, but I do think there'll be a conversation this year about, you know, what do we do with the funds that have been allocated for the purpose but districts aren't using it? How do we put that back into more school resource officers and law enforcement to make sure that every school is covered in a fair and equitable way? So I think that's a topic that you'll see taken up. On the policy side of that bill, there's just some implementation glitches that need to be fixed. When you write a bill that massive and that detailed in such a short amount of time, really in a matter of two weeks, they put that thing together, there are, and School Board attorney, I'm sure you've seen it, there are inconsistencies in the way the bill was written. There are references to things that aren't defined and that should be defined or they're not defined the same way. So there's going to be some cleanup, I think, none of that in the year ahead. And that's something to keep an eye on as well. So those are just some initial thoughts. Diane.
Or do you have any comments? Questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Okay. When we speak about the reoccurring funding for the compression adjustment, a very strong advocate for this board and for the state is a gentleman by the name of Jim Hamilton. And Jim did, we first met him when he came and did kind of an assessment. So I had an opportunity to speak to him the other day, and he said, "We should be working on this like right this minute, not sooner." But he also suggested, in doing some research, that within the state statute, there already is a provision for minimal guarantee. And within that minimal guarantee, it's already in the formula. Hence, rather than trying to add something to it, his recommendation was to work on getting that funded, and that may be a better approach.
Yeah, and Jim and I have spoken about that as well. In fact, last session, he was a great guiding force for me in learning about what the compression adjustment was and then guiding me as we advocated to the policymakers and the budget writers to make sure that that was funded. The minimal guarantee is a great place to start. I think the political realities of trying to move that number up are just more challenging than funding the compression adjustment. So I think because it's early and we've got time on our side, I think running on both parallel tracks is the right thing to do right now with the hope of getting one or both funded. We continue to have a great champion on the Senate side in Rob Bradley, who, this was really his priority last session, to make that thing funded. And he continues to be the Appropriations Chair in the Senate for the next two years. That's a great place for him to be sitting. Lake County is well represented on the education appropriations side in the Senate with Kelly Stargell being the Appropriations Chair for education. And then, on the policy side in the House, we, of course, have Jennifer Sullivan chairing policy. And she, thanks to Diane, knows this issue, I would argue, better than anybody in the House. And she really has sunk her teeth into it and understands it. She, of course, is on the policy side, but she'll be sitting, most likely, on the Education Appropriations Committee. And, of course, we'll have access to those leadership conversations as they're taking place in the heat of session. So I think we're well positioned, but it's a big number. $56 million is real money in a state budget, and that's what they were able to fund last year. Getting them to fund that on a recurring basis or even once more can be challenging. But we'll be, you're right, we've been working on this since the last session ended. We haven't stopped focusing on that one.
Thanks.
Figuring that it would be a priority.
Are we discussing our legislative priorities now or just?
No, now would be the time to go ahead and make any changes, I think, if we can kind of redraft the draft while we have them here to provide some insight as to what they think is reasonable and practical and where we can best focus our efforts this session.
And playing on your early comments, your very first ones about career and technical, should we focus on a project rather than, I mean, we're saying that we want more career and technical, but just like you did with the Construction Academy Superintendent, that you were able to really laser focus.
Well, and that's another conversation you and I had had. I don't know if you want to provide some insight into your thoughts on that topic?
Yeah, so the short answer is yes, we could do that. In last year's application, it does ask the question of, are you going to seek funding again for this same project? We answered no on that. Doesn't mean we can't change our mind. We can go back and ask for either money for the same project or a different project. That's certainly okay. And so, that's a conversation and a decision that the board can make. As Diane and I were sort of working through what these priorities might look like, we had at least initially thought about more big-picture funding issues. And if more money goes into technical and career training, how does Lake County just draw those funds down versus putting at risk a select appropriation where we don't yet know what a new governor's philosophy is going to be on vetoes? We don't yet know how they're going to either approach a, what is a special project for a member or a district versus how, you know, we sort of knew with Governor Scott after eight years what his approach to vetoes were. And how do you get through the veto process with a governor where you have a frame of reference? We don't have one yet with this new governor. That was part of what weighed into it when we talked about it, because at that point, we didn't know who the governor was going to be, much less what their approach might be. But it certainly is something that we could take a fresh look at, and if there's a particular project in mind for this board. The new house form has been released in terms of the things you have to fill out for every project. The rules remain the same, which is, it basically becomes a standalone bill. That project, it must go at least through one committee in order to be considered for the final budget. The Senate has not released their rules in form yet, but what we have heard, at least anecdotally, is that we expect their rules to more mirror the House. So you could have a standalone bill or at least have the project get a hearing before it can be entertained for the budget. So all of that's in play. It's just, there's some more unknowns there. I think February 5th is the House deadline, so we've got some time on our side if we want to approach a project. But, of course, the sooner the better so you can get that thing in play and have it heard. So that was kind of our thoughts.
But if we say no, then I don't think we go back and revisit it, to your point, that we could come back, that when you put something down in favor, that means something.
Yeah. And that, at the time, we felt like that was going to be one of the factors in getting the dollars. And so, we said, "No, we're not going to come back and ask for the same project." And in fairness, we felt like that was enough to get us going. And we've seen the success of the project, and hopefully, it's going to be self-sustaining as that project continues and the students are selling projects that they're making and such. So if you look at your legislative priorities, it does say to increase the weighted funding for CTE. This kind of piggybacks off what we're seeing coming out of FSBA and FADS in regards to CTE, knowing that it is a priority of many in the House and Senate. Back in the day, CTE funding, if you look at the FTE formula, was weighted, you know, the basic FTE is a 1.0 factor, give or take. CTE carried a higher weight, 1.2, 1.3, whatever it was back in the day. Over time, that has gone back to a 1.0 weighted funding. We'd like for it to go increase again so that a child enrolled in a CTE course is generated instead of 1.0, or 1.2, or 1.3. That would then kind of share those dollars across all projects, bringing in more for CTE in general to help support existing projects. We do have some exciting ones coming up. You already know about our project with our teaching academy at Taverius High School. And we are in the midst of launching a new finance academy down at Lake Manuela High School, and we're finishing the contract on that. In fact, Mr. Johnson, I just spoke about that on Friday as we're finalizing that with Insight Credit Union. That one is, the funds for that one is being covered by Insight, so it's not one that we need to go out and ask for additional dollars for, thanks to that great partnership that we have with them. So the weighted funding seemed to be the way to go. So that's why that one is there instead of a specific project.
But couldn't we do that and, for example, we have the Aviation Club that hadn't been funded? Couldn't we target one initiative and then also still ask for the other, or is that counterintuitive?
You can absolutely ask for both. There's nothing in the rules that say you can't, particularly with what Ms. Cornegate just described as more of a holistic approach that could be shared statewide and how do you draw down the funds? We could approach one particular project specific for Lake County and line up the sponsors and go like we have the last couple of years with individual projects. That is an option before you.
I like that. Like, we, is it, is it going to win like two years?
Yeah, that's my concern.
That's my question. How much political capital have we expended or collateral?
Every legislative session's different. And so, like I started out by mentioning, you have 50 new members of the Florida House and about 10 new members of the Florida Senate. And most of those new members of the Senate are former House members, so there's some carryover there. But every new session is different in terms of the political capital that's being expended. And as I look at these priorities and the things that we're going to be focusing on, I don't think that adding a project is too much to ask. I think you have to go in eyes wide open with the unknowns and the possibilities of either not being funded or not being funded to the level that you asked for. For instance, even on Destination Lake, we asked for more than that. It was great to get 866, and that's a great starting point, but very rarely do you get the full amount that you asked for. And so, that's just kind of a genuine or a general reality of the budgetary process. And then, you face the possibility of veto and not knowing what the approach is going to be of this new administration to those member projects. So there's a lot of unknowns there, but there's not a, I don't, as I sit here today, see a risk of political capital on the others if you decided as a board to go for an additional project. I probably wouldn't load it with a bunch of them, but if there's one that is a consensus of this body that is important and needs to be funded, I think you could go for both. And Katie reminded me here as we were talking that on the education policy side in the Senate, you have Manny Diaz, who's going to be chairing that committee in the Senate. He's from Miami but has some continuity. He served in that role in the House before coming over to the Senate. And Dennis Vaxley from your delegation is also on that policy committee, which is nice to have Lake well represented on the appropriations and the policy side.
So when you guys, I mean, this is a list, right? So obviously, we don't take this list in. There's got to be the beef behind it. So we're talking about increasing weighted funding for career and technical, and we just described three different things sitting here that could use tons of funding. But there's, I mean, I know that's what you guys kind of have, is that supporting background piece. I know that when we go, we've always taken something. Sherry's written that for us. But is that just something that you guys put together with the plan? Whenever we define these, you're going to put that, you're putting the research that even Vance spoke about, like, why do we want that? What are we going to use those dollars for? I know that's how we've been successful here in Lake County, is really being explicit with what we're going to spend the dollars on. And I do think that seeing we've got this, we've got this, we've got this, we've got this, it's all up and started, but just to continue it and how to average that out would be, I don't think it's a bad strategy because we're saying, look at everything we're doing going forward, and this would help this increase. But the meat and potatoes comes with the presentation, the floor, the bill that gets written or whatever.
Yeah, we'll be working, once this document or variation there, once that's approved, we'll be working hand-in-hand with your staff to make sure that the meat's put on the bones. And then, we go to Tallahassee with all the possible arguments of why we need the thing we're asking for.
And one of the things that was helpful last session is, once we kind of identified what that top priority was, we had a legislative brief that we worked on together, just kind of a one-pager that was our talking points that we all shared, and so we're all speaking from the same.
And because there's so many unknowns sort of heading into this new session, you know, we may, three or four weeks from now, as we're in committee weeks or the first part of session, realize, look, we've got a real shot at these three, and the rest of them are just, they're not flying this year. And then, we, as the weeks go on, hone our target.
I feel like that's what we've done in the past. We've said, "These two are the two." Like, these are the two, like, I know the compression funding, that was the one that we were pushing in, the Construction Academy. So I feel like you've got a much stronger approach there rather than taking this bulleted list that all asked for increased funding. It just makes sense to me.
It is, like, just like February.
Which is far too late.
Yeah. It is. It is.
No, 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 but to have that and then be able to also present it at the same time is just kind of a reinforcement.
Yeah.
Are y'all all going for Lake Days or is anybody not? What's your plan on Lake Days?
Right now, I'm scheduled to go. I know. Are you going, Dr. Burns?
I wasn't planning on going this year. I figured I would go at some other time. Because last year, last time we went together, we sort of, you know, there's only 15 minutes.
15 minutes that you get. I know.
And we're fine talking as fast as we can.
Well, it goes without saying, and we talked about this in years past, of, I mean, any, whether it's Lake Days that you come up for or for School Board Association Days or FADS Days, whatever days you end up being there for, or if you want to make a special trip where your schedule happens to fall in the way that you can get to Tallahassee for a couple of days, our job on your behalf is to make that time on the ground productive. And so, as long as you give us a little bit of notice that you're coming, we'll make sure that those hours on the ground are put to great use.
And those were very productive days last time. I kind of relied on them to say, "Hey, this will be a good day, a good time to come." And they set up some appointments for me to get in and meet with folks, and so it was very productive, which I'm hoping that we'll have that opportunity again this year.
Sure we will.
You want to go, please?
Okay, sure. So the piece I noticed with the draft here, it's got a very strong recurring theme focusing primarily on the funding element of that. And certainly, as I think about where we are as a district, that's probably one of our greatest weaknesses, right? Where we rank in the state per pupil formula there, that there's no doubt we need additional dollars coming our way. But the other piece of this that I'm still thinking about, though, is the policy side. And that is, teachers are feeling beat up on throughout the state. Students are feeling beat up on throughout the state when we look at so many of the things that are just handed down. And also looking kind of at the crystal ball as to what I can maybe sense as coming to be an expanded school choice situation, right? And so, how do we ensure a public school district doesn't have, see its traditional schools beat up on through that expansion? So, I mean, I'm hesitant to just have page after page of priorities, but I feel like there's something there missing from that.
Well, I can see a scenario, a lot of what you just described, my guess is, will be priorities of the Superintendent's Association, of the School Board Association, that are more global school district priorities that may not be on the policy side, may not speak specific to Lake, but there's something that we care about. Given how the committee structures are shaken out, you may find yourself on the leading edge of some of those policy initiatives just because of the folks that you have access to that are part of your delegation, serving in these important roles. And so, we have represented local governments of, in fact, it might have been on your priority list last year, as to, in addition to the, in addition to the specific itemized priorities that you have, you also sort of adopt the association's agenda in its entirety as an additional priority of yours. And then, you help advance those in partnership with the other advocates on the ground for either other individual school districts or for the associations writ large. So that's certainly something that we are prepared for and capable of pushing alongside you with those associations.
The one piece I like here in terms of this is, we use the words of increasing teacher salaries. But I guess it's tied to a program that I'm not sure that the legislature is willing to necessarily bend on, right? That we're saying increase teacher salaries, but do it from best and brightest. So if the leadership hasn't really changed all that much at the state level, are they going to be willing to bend on that? And so, does that teacher salary get?
I would add in, I was, good morning, Chris Carmody. I was driving in and listening. I would add, what Robert said earlier, with Chair Sullivan coming from this delegation and having a great relationship with Superintendent and y'all, certainly, she's going to have her focus, and she's part of that caucus that was for expanding school choice, there's no doubt. But she's from Lake, she knows you all, she knows your schools. We have an opportunity, this board and this county, working with her, to help explain to her where some of these focuses are and where she can go. Anytime there's new leadership, Speaker Corcoran, he might have another role in the administration, but he won't be the speaker next year. It'll be Speaker Oliva, so there'll certainly be new approaches to these issues. I don't think there'll be carbon copy exact approaches. That's an opportunity for us to educate her on priorities of ours, pick and choose a couple that we think are really important. And we get to be the tip of the spear for many of the state organizations that we belong to because she's going to have such a major role the next two years in education on the House side. And as I think Robert said, as Katie pointed out, Manny Diaz on the Senate side is very well-positioned and knows the issues well. I think there's always an opportunity in new tier cycle and a new governor to re-educate and say, "We understand this is your approach, but let me tell you a couple of reasons why maybe you could tweak it in this direction and we can have some real good results." What they don't respond well to, and I think you guys know that, is us or anyone just saying, "The way it's always been done is the way we want to keep it. Don't change anything up there." That never goes over well. But I don't think this board can be accused of making those arguments. You guys have always been very open-minded. Others, not so much. They just come in and say, "Don't touch anything." So, but we have an opportunity there, but you're right. Some of these issues are going to be heavier lifts than others, given the already kind of priorities that they've laid out.
What if we, in fact, embrace the idea of school choice, since that is the leadership's opinion? And all we say is, "Let us play on the same playing field. Unshackle us." And so, whatever you give to a charter, just give the same benefit to the public schools and let us compete.
From a global policy perspective, it's a fair argument. Now, whether or not they're willing to do that becomes another question.
You guys write the thing.
That's what I was going to say. I wrote down the same thing, just give us a level playing field. And so I would love to, your feedback on maybe some language to help.
But, but see, that, that level playing field, have, or unlevel playing field currently occurs in so many different ways, right? When a charter school comes in and says, well, we're not going to provide transportation, but they receive the same funding per student, then they can take that funding that they normally would have, that we would have normally spent on transportation, all of a sudden they put it in the classroom, and they say, look, look at how many more teachers aides that we have than the traditional public school. See how much better we are, see how much we invest in the classroom. Like, that's a case where they shouldn't get that funding if they're not providing transportation.
In the FEFP, there's a transportation component, and they get that-
Yeah, but it doesn't only cover 50% for us, and so therefore, we're using our general funding to make up the difference. They're not having to use their general funding to make up the difference.
Oh, that's awkward.
And so that's, that's one of those disadvantages, where the playing field is unleveled, or that they come in and not have to build the SREF. And I think we've got, you know, I'm thinking, well, why, if they're not building the SREF, then why are they getting the same dollars per, you know, for capital spending?
But we're going to have that opportunity to have that discussion.
Right.
What we are.
And I, I would go back, sorry to interrupt, I, I would go back to, we have an opportunity. You have someone who's local, who wants to, to take care of her district, her home base, if, if at all she can, while she represents the whole state as a, as representative, she cares about where she's from. And I think if we outline some of these issues and say, look, we get it, you know, school choice is where it's all headed, and we don't necessarily oppose it, we just want to make sure that you don't completely eradicate what we do, because the state probably could, I think they all get, the state couldn't possibly tackle every student's education through just school choice options. Like, the traditional system will always be around, and probably, to the greatest extent, the, the provider. But we have that opportunity, I think we should outline some of the top concerns we have and say, work with her, see if she's got ideas, we can help come up with ideas, work with our partners and say, what, what can we do to fix some of these? I, I don't want to say she's going to say, yep, let me go take these speaker and they're all done for you. Of course not. But I do know she'll be open-minded. She has been since she's been elected, and I know she'll continue to be. And in this role, she has a real opportunity to kind of maybe bridge the gap on some of these issues that have been dividing school districts and charter schools and traditional, non-traditional schools.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly am thankful for the relationship that you Superintendent have forged with, with her, because I think that she's been quite valuable for our district, and, and there's no doubt we'll be able to get her ear to, to share this information. You know, I just kind of look at the larger state agenda on this and think, as this rapidly expands, how do we not get left in the dust, not being able to evolve or be at a disadvantage because, you know, they get more resources and more funding, or, or, or that we don't have any oversight as it rapidly expands? You know, when we look at across the state, the percentage of charter schools failing versus a traditional public school, and we see that there's a disparity there, we see, gosh, there's a risk. These kids come in, they count towards our district scores for their student achievement levels, but we can't really go in and say, what you're doing is just not even sound educational practice until their charter comes up for renewal, you know, every five years or so. And even still, they could underperform against schools in the neighborhood, but it's still not low enough for us to, to do anything about it. So I guess I just want to, I understand the sense of preserving their autonomy, but I still want to be able to have some oversight, you know, some say in what sound educational practice. I mean, putting 765 kids on five acres, right? That's ridiculous. But that's the case of what we've got going on right now, right? From a charter school.
All right.
So as, I wanted to make a comment about the, the Best and the Brightest Fellowship Program, that Manny Diaz is, that was his baby.
It was.
And so, having, I mean, there may be some discussion about it, but he's pro temp right now, so.
Yeah, I don't know that that, so, I think increasing teacher salaries is a, is absolutely laudable and, and one that we should pursue. I think the political realities of pulling the money from there are probably what you all are envisioning, a difficult one. And I don't know that that's going to be unwound in one year, or, that was passed, what, two sessions ago, so, in just two sessions. But it's something to keep an eye on, because it, I don't think that was a permanent program. I think there's a sunset in it, we can keep an eye on sort of, on whether or not there's additional funds available for teacher salaries, but maybe not pull it from there. I think you can have a more global, more funding for teacher salaries without necessarily itemizing where you want to pull the money from.
And the RLE was Corcoran's priority, like hardcore priority, so-
And he's no longer Speaker.
And if he's actually going to be Education Commissioner, that seems not very likely also.
Well, here's, here's what I'll say about the RLE.
Do we have that bullet?
Well, here's, here's what I'll say about the RLE. There was a deal brokered last session that didn't exist in the three previous sessions where Corcoran had been First Budget Chair and then his first session of Speaker, and all construction was off the table, or the RLE was completely reduced for, no matter what the parcel was. Last year, the deal was structured where new construction was included, which helped a little. It didn't fill the whole nut that had been, that had been created over the last several years by reducing the RLE across the board. Whether or not that deal remains in place with a new Speaker is yet to be determined. Just from a 30,000-foot view, this incoming Speaker's priority is healthcare above all else, and the priority of Senate President Galvano is sort of higher ed above all else. So K-12, which had been the unmatched priority of last Speaker, isn't there, at least for these two. Now, it's still, everybody goes to Tallahassee caring about education, everybody has an idea about how to fix K-12, so it's going to be a top priority, no matter what, but it's not the, it's not the clear top number one thing that these two presiding officers want to deal with. So whether or not that RLE deal that was structured last year remains in place, I think is still to be seen. The Senate, of course, over the years, had always been the one that said, just because taxable value increases doesn't mean that's a tax increase. The House took the opposite view and ultimately was winning that argument over the last couple of years.
The deal won't get worse.
Sort of, sort of to be seen.
The deal won't get worse, though. Senate Budget Chairman Bradley is returning for another two years, and he was one of the ones who, he was the person who helped broker that deal to at least make sure new construction would count. And he, if he had his druthers, he would go all the way back to the way it was. So I, no one really knows for sure where Speaker Oliva will be, although I, I think it's safe to assume he'll probably follow in the line of Speaker Corcoran on that particular issue. But Chairman Bradley's not going to let the deal get any worse, if that makes sense.
So is, is, do we leave that, I mean, how does this list help you? I mean, are we going to take our top, like, like you were saying, our top two? Do we leave it, do we leave that in the list?
And is it politically savvy to listen to what she's saying? So we don't present them a list that obviously this, this entire bullet goes against the grain of everything that they're advocating for? Or do we leave that off, knowing that there's some other areas that we can focus on that might get their attention? And if, if they look at it automatically and go, well, we're not doing that because it's got these initiatives on it, then we've just kind of shot ourselves in the foot, where it'd be nice to-
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm, at least in my view, of leaving the RLE part in there, because that's a philosophical argument that is no surprise that a school district makes that argument, right? I mean, it's, that's, and by the way, it was the policy for years and years and years and years before the last three. So I don't, I don't have any heartburn, as I look at it, of leaving in the RLE piece and saying, well, let's restore that to how it used to be. Best and brightest probably could be removed for the reasons that we've identified as, as a place to pull the teacher salary increase from, but that, that shouldn't say, that's not to say that you shouldn't ask for teacher salary increase.
Right, absolutely.
But in, in all fairness there, and I should have asked this question before this meeting, so it would not look like a dummy, but anyway, here we go. We have three different pay salaries for teachers. Do other counties have the same problem because of what happened in 2014, 2015 from state legislation?
To be honest with Chairman, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
They should, they're required by statute to have that.
Okay. So the way to fix, even though we get increases for teachers, our problem is, those that were still on the, the original pay salary are the ones hurt the most. And, and I think something should be something, in their legislative-wise, in the wording, that allows us to correct that problem, but because we can't give them more of a percentage raise than we give anyone of the other two, then those teachers been here for years in our system are hurt.
Well, part of the problem goes back to also, if you are on that scale and you're rated highly effective, you don't get paid for highly effective, you only get paid for being effective, right? But the state, though, says, well, we provided an avenue, right? We gave you an option to go to an annual contract, but that's not appealing for a lot of people for a number of reasons, right? So why should I have to, you know, so, so last year, a year before, I don't remember what year it was, we said that you should pay people for their, their evaluation score regardless of their contract. If they're highly effective, give them the highly effective money. But, but yeah, the, I mean, the pay is, pay is a huge issue, and that goes back to the root of teachers getting beat up, right?
So, so even if they send us the money to give teachers raises, it still does not benefit the ones that have been faithful to the school system for all those years.
Well, and this would be one of those areas where we're not asking for funding, we're just asking for the opportunity to be able to fairly compensate teachers.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that angle.
And that's more of a policy.
Yeah, I like that policy, flexibility in the scales.
I mean, if we're talking about fairly compensating teachers, then it also goes back to, how was your evaluation derived? Were you evaluated based on, what was the reason that we use that test? Was it truly to inform instruction, or was it just to evaluate you? And were you rated using tests from subjects that you don't even teach? You know, that later on, we're going to look at the ongoing saga of, of, of the inequity of a really bad system. And, and that's the case in point. Because of this, the state requirement that we tie some sort of student achievement to each teacher's score, well, we don't have a, a state test for every subject, right? And it's really impractical and would be completely unreliable and unrealistic for us to, to develop all those tests. And then we get back into, we're testing people just to test them as opposed to actually have any sort of sound educational practice behind them, so I, I'd just love to see that element go away. I mean, it's just, it, it just doesn't work. I mean, it's a good, I, it sounds great that I'm going to, I'm going to evaluate you based on your results, but we just can't get reliable results for every teacher, which is not what those tests were designed for. I know that's a long shot there, but, you know. But, but my fear, though, is, I mean, even if, even if that's not a bullet that we're yelling and screaming about on here, the moment that that falls off is the moment that we've said we, we've given up on that fight, and I just, I'm not, I'm not ready to give up on that.
Well, couldn't we highlight the ability to evaluate them, or, or to compensate them fairly, and then behind that kind of put some of them behind the test?
Yes, that's behind them. That's right.
And the other morale driver is that we had at one point where a highly effective teacher was guaranteed that they would have employment the next year.
No, we don't have that.
Legislature took that away.
They did.
And so, I mean, so it's almost, this is, as I'm listening to the discussion, I don't know how we frame it, but more local control level?
Yes, yes.
That's what we need.
Right.
Was there any traction at all with Placencia and Mayfield's bill on accountability on, was there any talk that it would, you know how some bills just take traction until the next year, or is that just a political stuff?
I think the, the House bill got a hearing, but that was as far as it went. And, and I do have every expectation that those two members will file a similar bill again. And sometimes good policy does take a couple of years to, to move. I can check with both of those members and, and let you know if, if they plan on filing it again.
It's a good bill, so it'd be nice if it had any traction at all.
No, he was very grateful, anecdotally, for the, for the support of this county and what he was trying to do. He loved meeting you guys and getting to talk about it.
I also wanted to bring up some of the points that were FSBA priorities, which were policy, I thought they were good, was, one was to do, to, um, because if we can match up with other groups, then there's a little more power.
Yeah.
To decrease the bottom 300 schools. So the bottom 300 schools are based on simply the reading score. So there are A schools in the bottom 300, which is really counterintuitive, because their math scores are good, or, and so, one of the, one of the legislative goals was to decrease the bottom 300, from 300 down to 100.
Did you used to be, right?
I don't know.
Is that, is that the 300 that are allowed to have the, the seventh hour of reading instruction?
Yes, required to have the seventh hour.
That was David Simmons' priority?
Yeah.
And we can talk to Senator Simmons about that. He's now the Speaker pro temp, or, excuse me, the President pro temp of the Senate and remains a, a good friend, somebody that we can speak to specifically about that. It's something he remains passionate about.
Right.
We can talk about what that might be.
So, okay, but, but thinking about, these are the bottom 300 schools for reading, right? So they're required to have an extra hour of reading instruction. How do you go make the argument to say, even though you're an A school because you excelled in all these other subjects and your reading is still lousy, that you should not have additional? I mean, granted, you should review the practices you're currently implementing and make use of the current time that you've got, right? I mean, I, I won't, you know, put that aside, but, but how do you say these schools should not have extra instruction, or extra support in reading? Because that's what's the area they struggled in.
I don't, I mean, I would argue that it was a, maybe they were just a, it could be the wrong curriculum, and it could be a lot of things-
Right.
-that are wrong, and the excess regulations don't necessarily result in-
The extra time doesn't necessarily fix it.
And there's always a bottom, yeah, and there's always a bottom 300, which is how we're getting these A schools in the bottom 300.
Yeah.
Right.
You know? It's like being graded on a curve.
Yeah.
Another one, because we have a teacher shortage, and this, this one is, is pretty simple. The teacher certifications, one of the arguments that's being made is to, if you have, for example, an English teacher, that they simply need to be certified in English, and they don't necessarily, like, a lot of English teachers have trouble passing the math portion. And so, then we lose our teacher. Or if they're a certification teacher, like a CTE teacher, they may be an excellent teacher, but then they can't pass the general math for, it's usually the math that I think is the most difficult. So, um, working on the, on the, the, they've made the certification harder and harder. Is there a better way of phrasing that?
Make it more directed to an E.
Yeah.
Yes, testing, yeah, the certification should be more directed towards the, the requirements of the position, that's right. So if you're going to teach a math course, then when you do the subject area test, then you need to take that subject area test that targets the math that you'll need for that. But to your point, yeah, why would the English teacher need this complex?
Having a certification should be reflective of the teaching side.
But can't you teach out of your-
Out of field.
Out of field?
You can.
So I'd hate for that person that failed math, didn't teach you math.
But, but for them all-
Family getting a career. I'm sure that could be addressed, though, like, that they-
You can't move into a-
Yeah.
But, but to get the professional certification, though, you need to pass the general knowledge test at some point. So you're going to have to pass this math test at some point to teach English for the rest of your life. And so that-
Oh, you're just saying, going in, that you would waive it.
It is-
But within two years.
Well, what we have, what we end up with is an English teacher after two years who Well, what we have, what we end up with is an English teacher after two years who can't pass the math portion, then we have to let them go.
Can they get tutoring?
Or a CTE teacher, what?
Can they get tutoring? It's general math, right?
I don't know how general the general math is. I haven't taken the test.
And I think they've adjusted it based on the new standards. So a lot of us that didn't go through the new standards program and they come in to take the test and they don't have the background knowledge. I think the GKT is college requirement, though. So.
So new teachers.
Well, and anybody even alt-cert, you know, to get this, I know they have to take the GKT, I know that's required at the college level, but I don't know what they do for students that graduate.
Is it required, is it by college choice, or is it?
I don't know.
That's not mandated as part of a, I know UCF requires it, right? So then you get to the end of this, this program, having been there to go to school to become a teacher, and then you don't pass this one test, you don't get your degree?
That's right. You go to a different track. But we all battle the teacher certification test. I know that that's not something that's isolated to university or alt certification. I know that's something that's.
So, so, I mean, is that, is this an issue more for whoever the Commissioner of Education is going to be?
Right.
To look at the general knowledge test to say, does this test necessarily, I mean, we're painting with such a broad brush here, or why does everybody need this complex level of math?
Is that something that goes through rules?
Mrs. Luke, what is your opinion about it, since you teach teachers? What's your opinion about it?
About what?
The test.
The test? Well, we do, I, that's, I'm only saying this because at UCF, it's a requirement on their transcripts, so they have to take the test. They have to pass the GKT to get into their upper program. Like, it's something that's required for them. The subject area test, they have to pass their specific area. So that's what you guys are speaking about, where the language arts teacher would take the language arts. The elementary education people have to pass all sections, because elementary teachers pass. And there are some, there are some instances, I've seen both, I've seen some instances where they, they do not know the math. They will not be a math teacher, they don't want to be math teachers, and they have to take the test. I've seen others that are just terrible test takers. I mean, that's a legitimate thing, that test anxiety piece. So I can, I could tell you of one person right now who would be an amazing teacher, and it never came to fruition for her because she cannot pass the test. Cannot. Tried 10 times, times $200 per test, so. So, that didn't help, did it?
Not at all.
Sorry. You know, it's like any test, it's required. We have to do them, they're part of, you know, we get that whole thing, but then what is it really evaluating? I don't know that.
And then the other point under teacher certifications was that retirees be able to return within one month to teaching without the hit to the FRS instead of one year.
Yeah, that, that was a multi-year, I'm just thinking out loud with you, what they did on FRS and the drop program was a multi-year fight, for lack of a better term, that was, I think, in their minds, at least the minds of legislature, to put to bed when they did that. I don't know if they would make an exception for teachers and what that means actuarially for the FRS. We can certainly ask the question in partnership with the FSBA and see what they say.
Well, if you present to them that picture, so if you put some of these pieces together and you present them this picture of a critical teacher shortage area, of an exam or a required assessment that they can't pass, of the decreasing salary that we've spoken about, the best and brightest, all of those pieces together, maybe then we could come out with something. But I'm not sure which of those components it would cover, but.
Before raising it to a year, it was a month, right? You had to sit out for one or two or three months, three months?
Or 90 days.
Three months, it was.
Well, we can, we can ask the question, for sure. I just don't know, that'll be an actuarial conversation of, the number crunchers will have to look at that.
Didn't they make an exception for law enforcement?
I actually don't believe so. I, because I recently had to help someone who mistakenly went to some another employer and jeopardized their drop.
Wow.
Not a good day for that person.
No. That was a bad day.
And the only other point I had was, if we're going to have the restrict local capital outlet funding provided to charter school facilities that meet all state requirements for educational facilities, like, I had to, I just think the wording on that one is a little confusing. Can we just say that, that, that have facilities that meet hurricane standards?
That's right.
Hurricane, I know, but they don't, they don't know acronyms necessarily. Like, I had to, like, translate that particular one in my head, and I was, what does that mean? But if we, if we say, I feel like when we say hurricane, shelter, hurricane shelters, then it brings to the point that the public schools are all hurricane shelters, the charter schools are not required to build at that, that standard.
The challenge is going to be that, again, we're going to be taking it up in discussion where we don't build to SREF. So would we then hurt ourselves?
I thought we do build to SREF.
We do write this minute.
But if we level the playing field, that was suggested.
We have an opportunity to level the playing field in construction.
Mm-hmm.
By us having a discussion and a vote about not going to build unless it's required to be hurricane to SREF, which I think that that would hurt us then, or make an argument at least, that those.
So should we have this point at all?
Oh, this is just about charter schools.
Is it, is the question out loud?
It's good for the gainer. If we start building schools that aren't SREF, then how would we, why would we put that in, that we're not going to give capital if they didn't build to SREF? Where, right now, we're just saying, we're not going to give it to y'all.
But in relation to the SREF, though, we're building to state regulations, and that's what that is, that there's portions of the SREF where we are made to, my understanding that we have to meet so many schools or hurricane shelters in an area.
The designation is really not by emergency management, I think that's who we've been talking to. But the SREF standard is, is really the Florida Building Code.
Right.
On steroids when it comes to amount of space. It really is about space allocation, is where we are at a disadvantage.
Is this, is this directed towards balancing the playing field, or are there schools that there's concerns about where they're located and that they're not up to code on any level?
This is really saying, a charter school is a private entity, and they're already getting the, I don't mean to put words, the FTE. And why would we then maintain a school that's been built by, built by a private entity, by a private contractor on their own land? We're trying to support public schools is the intent of this funding.
There's one, one thing to throw in there that might actually have more traction, if it's about leveling or just about, if we're going to have to pay for it, we want to, is safety, as far as making sure that whatever the school, and I don't want to say this too far, because maybe some of our schools don't necessarily fit the bill, but school safety is obviously an issue. Are they built up to a certain safety code from, from attacks or what have you, if they're soft or hard targets? That may be something that's a little more relevant to this legislature, because they're certainly going to focus on that, charter or traditional public.
There isn't really a component of the safety part. SREF as much as it's, it's the Florida Building Code, that's what it is. So everyone builds a Florida Building Code.
I understand, I'm just saying, you might get more traction on that particular issue than this one, but we could certainly look through it.
By saying that, if they don't provide safety.
By putting some standards in there on safety, as opposed to on hurricane standards. I hear what you're saying, but I'm, what I'm commenting is, I don't know if that's going to gain as much traction up in Tallahassee as if it was pivoted to, this is about the safety issue, school safety, and putting them on those standards.
Okay, we've put lipstick on the pick all day long about how we're going to frame it. The reality is, what we're really saying is, is that private charter should not be getting capital funds. So it's not about hurricanes, it's not about safety. It is, again, that they are a private charter school, and should they get public capital dollars that are meant to maintain public schools?
Well.
That's the bottom line.
Yes, and exactly. And where, that's, that's the problem. I mean, we've seen so many people come in here, I mean, it's follow the dollars, right? People are profiting off of this. Facilities that we, as a taxpayer, are paying for many times over, because a lot of these deals are set up in where this, some, some rich guy sitting back in an office is collecting $900 per student every year that is attending that school. Taxpayers never own that facility, versus our schools, which are, of course, paid with taxpayer dollars.
So.
Our taxpayers own them.
I would just caution you all that almost, like, everyone in education in the House and the Senate owns a private charter.
Yes! And that's the policy problem right there. That's it.
So this is, like, that.
Well, how about if you own interest in a charter, you have to recuse yourself from your, in this discussion.
And they would, they would, of course, disagree with you that it's a private charter. They would, they would tell you that every charter school is a public school, just like.
That's right.
That's the argument they would immediately make, because it's not a private charter.
It's just so tangled up in these, these people back with vested interests profiting off of education.
It's a mess.
Well, the, the only other, like, sort of wiggle room is that if somehow restrict the funding of the charter schools if all of our capital needs are being met.
Or give us the dollars to maintain the buildings that are ours that they don't think.
Or if the school district still has any debt on the books.
On the, for those buildings, that's right.
Debt, or, well, it's, already we got consideration for debt.
Right, but that was just like a, like a stay of execution, right?
So it was just a year, yeah.
So that needs to continue to, to stay.
I thought it did stay, because then we have a rollout of a five-year plan showing the debt reduction, and then where it would go to capital, that we'd have to start paying. I thought so. Yeah, so that's in there. So really, the, that, if we want to, if we don't want to jade charters, we just say that we don't share any capital until, if, until the district's capital expenses are met, which has never been.
You got that?
Well.
I'm going to give it a try, that's for sure.
The argument on that one, though, is that a district will always come up with some capital expense, right?
But duh.
But legitimately, we can say, there is still debt there.
For that.
For, you know, we still, we're still paying on the schools, so we can't afford to give any dollars away.
No, but, but clearly and empirically, we could demonstrate, we're not jacking the books up, because, because ever since I've been on this board, that we have so many dollars, and that we have millions and millions and millions that we haven't funded, that we can't fund. So, once we've funded all those adequately, then I don't have a problem here. Like, if we were flush, we'd have problems.
All right.
Can I bring one more thing up? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no, like, final point. Just because I went to FSBA and had all these legislative meetings, one of the things they suggest that will be at least talked about, I'm not saying we would put it on our thing, but just be part of the conversation, is that, DeSanto had said that 80% of mon, I think it was 80% of monies should be spent in the classroom, and I know we've had that. So there's going to be a discussion, is what I've heard, about what is in the classroom. And so we just need to be part of that discussion. I just wanted to make you all aware.
Yeah, I do think, and I'm aware of his comment about that, and I do think that'll be one of the things that's talked about, to the, just by way of background, the transition teams and the transition process is very much underway. Those teams will prepare recommendations that ultimately will be the substance of the policy proposals that the governor-elect puts forward once he's, once he's inaugurated in January. And then the legislature will, like every year, take those policies and either consider them or not, depending on whether or not they match up with where the leadership of that legislature chamber wants to go. So we'll be tracking all that stuff and put you guys at the forefront wherever possible.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to throw this out there, and I'm not sure if it has any feet yet, but especially that, when I just got back, I think that's important. So I've been asking Mr. Farnsworth back and forth a little bit, because we discussed the teaching academy, the high school teaching academy, and how to recruit teachers to go into the teaching academy and then form that partnership with our university, so that they can, it's kind of like a grow-your-own grassroots level to recruit teachers, because we know how badly we need them. Is there any way, with the best and brightest dollars on the table for discussion, and we know that's something that's supportive by then, but we talk about a critical teacher shortage area, is there a possibility to have a discussion on the table about using those best and brightest dollars in conjunction with recruitment of teachers at the high school level, and securing some kind of formal commitment to back-to-education, paying for testing, paying for schooling, something in that regard to use those dollars for? And like I said, this is, like, pretty raw, I don't know if, he's writing things down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an idea certainly worth sharing.
It was to recruit the best and brightest, right? So let's recruit them. I know we're having discussions about how we can draw some more of those interns to Lake County, using this teacher academy program, or some possibilities, and so if those dollars are up for discussion whatsoever about, you know, recruitment, we have a teaching academy here for that specific request.
Tell me a little bit, if you don't mind, at the risk of redundancy, teaching academy, where is it? How's it funded?
So, and I'll tell you, we're not the only district, that's why I think this could have some traction. We actually had a consortium at UCF back in October, and I think we had, like, 17 districts that showed up, because everybody needs teachers right now. This is not an isolated to Lake County event. And they were all talking about these initiatives, we spoke about them several times, about how, I mean, they're even talking about paying interns at this point, just to come to different districts and pull them in. So we also, we have had the Commissioner of Education on the phone, we have had, as part of the discussion, Educators Rising, which is your Future Teachers of America. So I know what we have here is the promise of a job offer, I know other districts have the promise of a job, I know that Osceola has promised $2,500 per semester for their interns to come and intern in their district, like, and at high school, it's just a four-year program, they can come in at any level, they get, they get an elective course throughout the time, we're working on possibly doing some dual enrollment or CTE certification along the way as well, that's still in development. But then when they graduate, they go to whatever four-year university they went to, they come back here to Lake County to teach, or Osceola, Belushi, or wherever they're from. So I don't know, I know those dollars are pitted to recruit, so if we could maybe talk to those people that are Educators Rising that are involved, or universities that are involved, and districts that are involved, to maybe better allocate those dollars towards teacher recruitment and CTE.
Like a direct connect type thing?
Yeah, it is direct connect, so I don't want to put UCF out there, because this is, like I said, this is statewide, this is something that everybody's offering, but, yes, and I would like it, like, thinking about Lake County schools specifically, one, the CTE component, where they can draw on some more dollars for FTE, we can have more students doing certification, and qualifying certification or whatever, and we have, like, a homegrown, like, we can give them a contract that says, we'll give you a job if you come back to Lake County here. So it would benefit us directly that way. I don't know.
I'll try to put words to that and get to you guys for a final review, but it's certainly an idea worth floating.
Okay.
And it does mean to higher education, which is a priority.
And it's popular, right? Like I said, the districts are all, like, we, the feedback we got from the UCF consortium was, please give us more. We have a conference in April, we're inviting our high school academy attendees to come to, so I know everybody's kind of in on it, all the districts are looking at it, so it could really build.
Have any of the statewide associations put numbers to what the state, the teacher shortage is statewide? I know they, the nurses, for whatever it's worth, do a great job of talking about, the hospitals do a great job of talking about the specific nurse shortage that we have in Florida. Has anybody put numbers to what the teacher shortage is or will be as we continue to grow?
I don't know.
I think individual districts have, but I don't know that collectively anything's come out.
And what is ours, as we forecast, like, today and forecasted out? Do we have any idea what our?
Stuart?
Don't know.
Stuart, have you guys done it?
I, FDA has, but I don't have the members who are available.
We can do that after, I just, something that came to my mind of.
Yeah, yeah.
They do a great job of identifying the need in the nurse area, what if we collectively with our measures did the same thing, and really shined a light on the teacher shortages that we have both now and forecasting out as we grow?
Can you help me with something? And I'm going to go all the way back to us hiring you. So when we come up with these amazing ideas.
Every one of them's great.
Off the charts, right? Everyone. Do you then sit down with someone you hope will sponsor a bill, will take the gist of it and write a bill? How does that, how does it move from us all talking to you visiting to us seeing action?
So the, on the appropriations bills or the special projects, as the, I'll start there, because those are the easiest ones to describe. Last year, we collectively determined that going after Destination Lake was top priority. We took that priority to Senator Maxley and to Representative Sullivan, and they filed the bills, ran them, we helped working through the process.
They write the bill, or you help them write the bill?
It all, it is, it is a product of the form that's filled out. That, that form becomes a piece of legislation in the House. In the Senate, it sort of is filed into the appropriations request forms, and those get considered by each of the budget silos. So we then are step by step with your sponsors, making sure that those bills get heard, that they pass, that they give the support.
You're building, you're going out and reaching out to other.
Exactly.
Okay.
Creating a network of support behind each of those ideas. So, and then it gets into the budget, and we protected it from, from the veto this past session. On the, on the more global issues like compression adjustment, working with folks like Jim Hamilton and others who represent districts that are falling below that statewide average, we were quickly realized early in the legislative process that that was going to be a priority of Senator Bradley, and we sort of galvanized around his effort to make sure the House came along. And ultimately, it was in the very last budget offer where the House, in large part thanks to Representative Sullivan going to Manny Diaz and saying, I want this, I need this for my district, that the House matched the Senate's offer and funded that at $56 million, which then would get spread out formulaically to the districts. So every issue's a little bit different, but where we come alongside the district is to be your problem solvers. You're identifying issues that you've got, that you want to focus on in the upcoming session, it becomes our job to say, all right, what does that look like from a policy bill or from appropriations bill, or from an amendment, or simple advocacy? That's where we come in, to make sure that all that gets boiled down to effective advocacy in Tallahassee.
But then, at what point, because just like, I had no idea about the best and brightest, and you knew the whole background behind it, at what point, like, she brought up, maybe we shouldn't be talking about it? Should you be saying, like, okay, this really sucks, like, you guys got no chance?
Yeah, we get feedback throughout the process when we're meeting with, whether it's Chair Sullivan or other members of the delegation, or other folks in Tallahassee. It's our job, at least we view it, to, to give you that honest feedback and say, it's a good idea, it's just not the right session to do it.
But it may also be, if it's, if it looks like it's going south, that we could begin But it may also be, if it's, if it looks like it's going south, that we could begin to reach out to our delegation for one last push if it's that big a deal to us.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and there's nothing more powerful. That's why I started out by mentioning the days in Tallahassee. There's nothing more powerful than y'all being there to look them in the eye and tell them what you need from them, whether that's an appropriation or a policy issue. But like I mentioned also earlier, as we get between now and the start of session or even the middle of session, we'll know which of these priorities has legs and which don't. And then we'll be honing our focus on those because nobody gets everything they ask for in any given session. It's all a matter of ranking your priorities and then focusing on the ones that have a chance of getting to the finish line. And we'll be working step by step with the every, all the way through that.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Some, and I don't know what would be the timing, but certain counties do like a legislative roundtable where they have, they invite, and we could at least invite all of their delegation members to have like a roundtable discussion with the board members. Would you guys be interested? I don't know what is the ideal timing of that, if that might even be in the spring, but I wanted to bring it up as an idea.
It's a great idea, and y'all have a little bit more manageable of a delegation than some large counties do. So, so getting them to the table or at least getting a plurality of them here is not, is not all that heavy of a lift, assuming we can make it work on the calendar. A workshop setting like this could be an option or just a, obviously anytime y'all are all in the room, it has to be publicly noticed and you have to go through those steps. But finding a date and going and pursuing those members is something we'd be happy to help you with.
So I think we have some work to do. So as we typically do, and I'll work together to craft some changes to this based on your feedback, and then we'll bring it back to you again to, to take a look at before we finalize it and improve it.
Your next board meeting is Monday. Well, let's get to work.
I think Robert said at the beginning, I'm sorry I wasn't here, but on the funding priorities, the sooner we can get those in, the filing deadline, I think is February 5th, to just file it to be drafted. But in a perfect world, they've been filed and it's a bill that's been produced and maybe even been heard through committee by February 5th. And I say that partly because we're probably gonna lean on Chair Sullivan to file at least one, maybe more, and other members of the delegation. And we want to give them enough time to review it, vet it, give us feedback such that we're not last minute getting it through. I think I preached to the choir on that, but I just figured I'd state it for the record because the sooner we can get it moving, the better.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on to 3.02.
Do we need a break?
[laughing]. It's gonna rush for me.
I know you brought your lunch, but we're not gonna do that.
We're gonna take about a 10-minute break. So at 10:50, we'll be re-convened. All right, we're gonna resume the meeting. And on the agenda item now is 3.02, Lake County Schools Referendum Budgeting. Mr. Scott Ward, our chief financial officer. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Howard. Just quickly going through a presentation of the potential revenue from .75 millers. This is based on the property values of last year. Obviously that would, hopefully that'll increase in the, in the next year. And so the potential funding for .75 mil would be $17,27,522. Per statute, we would only be allowed to budget 96% of that. That's because of the discounts that taxpayers get if they pay early. The statute only allows us to budget 96%. And then also, because this is a voter-approved referendum, it's not a required local effort. The tax collector by statute collects 2% for the commissions for handling the money. So the total available estimated for next year would be $16,019,493. We have some district-wide costs. These are things that apply to all schools within the district, all public schools within the district. We have a district safety officer. His salary would then be $80,000 approximately. We have the security software that covers all students within the geographical area. That's the Rave and the Social Sentinel. That'd be $122,000. Contracted alternative ed, this is the amount of the contract that is estimated to exceed the FTE that's earned by those students, 1.3 million. And then an expansion of some of our alternative ed here in the county. So the total district-wide cost would be $2.5 million. The next slide is a proportionate share for the charter schools. This proportionate share is currently based on the student FTE of each school, and it would be of the proportion that's remaining after the district-wide cost would be deducted. So you, you'll see each charter school listed there currently, and their estimated proportionate share based on FTE. And that would be $1.6 million total. These are some programs that, that have been discussed, and we have Dr. Landry here also to, to give us some additional insight. But to budget an RN or an LPN at each school plus three regional RNs would be $2.2 million. Mental health counselor at each school would be $2.6 million. Instructional personnel for in-school suspension at each school would be $2.4 million. One social worker per two schools plus one district program social worker would be $1.4 million. One psychologist per two schools plus one district program person would be $1.8 million. And then the current SRO contracts that exceed the safe schools funding would be $1.2 million for a total of $11.89 million for district school And at this time, Dr. Landry can kind of go over some of the programs.
Okay. Morning. Thank you for having me this morning. Happy to be in front of you again, talking about mental health and school safety. The handout that I've shared, we've shared it with the audience as well since it wasn't on board docs. Our federal and state laws designate for us who the mental health professionals are at, at our schools and on our school campuses and in our district. So those folks are school psychologists, school social workers, school counselors, and school nurses. And so what I've done here to kind of frame this for you is to share each one of those professions, a very, very brief description of some of their job roles. And then the way we kind of came out this is that I, I shared what our current allocation is based on the numbers that we have right now. And then there's a national and state recommendation for allocation for each of these groups. And then what we do is we kind of came up with a compromise. And so what you'll see there, for example, for school psychologists, our current allocation is one school psychologist per 2,300 students. The actual recommendation at the national and state level is one per 500 to 750. So if you actually run those numbers, what it equals is that we would need somewhere between 84 and 60 psychologists. So that is not feasible. So what we did was we kind of thought about their roles and how they're working now and what would be feasible. So what we came up with was one guy, one school psychologist per two schools. Okay? So that's gonna put us at 20-something, not upwards of 60. And so we kind of used that logic for each of the groups, and you can see there what we're recommending. So one per two for school psychologists, same for school social workers, skip the mental health counselors. That's a special case I want to talk with you about. And then school nurses, we have, superintendent has long since been talking about her commitment to get a nurse at every school because of mental, because of medical needs, of course, high medical needs that we have in the district, but they are as well, mental health professionals. And so what we would like to do is kind of pull them in also, having one per school, and they could be trained to help us support students' mental health needs as well. In the bottom in the job description, I wanted to point out that anything that's in red, those are the areas where I believe we can enhance their roles and their support of students, given the new allocation that we're hoping to roll out. So those are the areas that we would hope to, you know, by having more of these professionals in the schools, that they would be able to perform these functions at a higher level for students. So if you look quickly at the mental health counselors, we already know that hiring certified school counselors is a very difficult task because their certifications are so specific. So what we talked about was having a mental health counselor at each school, one per school. It could be a counselor. It could be someone with slightly different credentials, but still mental health credentials. And so this would be kind of a new position. That's why everything in red there is in red in their job description. The other possibility would be to take some of the current roles that are on counselors and switch those to a different position. We had a chance to talk with school counselors this last week, and we did an activity, and we asked them, if you, if you could have another role at your school or another job position at your school that would allow you to do more mental health kinds of activities with students, what would that role look like? What would that person do? And I just wanted to share with you that there were 150 responses because some of them couldn't resist saying two things are equally important. The top three were MTSS coordination at 30%, 504 coordination, and ELL coordination. So those three positions are, those three roles are taking up a lot of their time, and so they're not able to engage in the mental health activities that they really wish that they could. So that's kind of one way to, to think about how we can kind of merge mental health with school counseling, okay, and how we can pull those apart. So maybe it might be, we have an opening for a mental health counselor at every school. Maybe a school counselor who's there moves over to that position. Maybe, I will say, 10% of the people that we, that talked with us in the activity said that really what they want is a mental health counselor at their school. So they're happy with the roles that they're currently playing, and they would like a mental health person to come to the school. So some counselors are ready and willing to engage in more training and more learning and jump right on the mental health train, but some are not, and that's okay. So I think we have the flexibility. We are so fortunate in our district that we already have many of these professionals. But if we can beef up the allocation just a little bit, like we've talked about with this referendum, with these dollars, then we can deliver mental health services at a much higher level, I believe. And I wanted to just, if I could, since we're in a public forum, I wanted to say how grateful I am to the citizens of Lake County who are supporting us, like fiscally supporting us by passing this referendum as we continue our work to make sure that our schools are safe and that every public school student in Lake County has access to mental health services. So I'm really proud to be in this county right now. Do you have questions about this piece right now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick questions, because like the school psychologists you have down is, you're wanting a total of 19?
We have a total of 19, sir, right now.
Okay, so that's gonna be enough to meet our needs?
No, we're hoping for, we're adding. So it would end up being one per two schools. And depending on whether or not you factor in the work that we have to do legally with charter schools, child find activities, it's between three and five more psychologists.
Well, my question would be like, a place like Sawgrass Bay?
Yes.
One to two schools? Who's gonna be the other school? That's only gonna be 7, 800?
Well, right now, each of the school psychologists has four or five schools.
I know. But I'm just talking about, we go to one to two schools.
Well, if you could do one at every school, I mean, that would be fantastic. That would be optimal, but...
In all fairness though, to that psychologist, if they take another school close by, which I would hope they would, then it's either Sawgrass Bay, and they either take Pine Ridge, or they go up to Wendy Hill Middle School, or they go to somewhere of that nature there. We're talking about giving them close to 3,000 students.
Right. And so what we try and do is balance large elementary schools with smaller, middle, or high schools, because the needs are different. The time constraints and the amount of time that are put in for evaluations and different kinds of needs kind of balance a little bit. So yes, a large elementary school would be paired with something that's a little bit smaller.
Okay.
And maybe if we have the flexibility, Sawgrass Bay is one, because they're so large and they have so many needs, that would have just their own psychologist.
Or you take like East Ridge High School.
Yes.
You know, that's one. So, I mean, so technically, to me then, saying one per two schools really is not reality.
So, so I guess, I guess maybe to your point, so if we can afford to hire, you said a total of 20-something, we'd have on staff, right? No, no, that's what we have now. But we, we go to 20-something. So 40,000 students divided by that, you figure out what that ratio is, and then you, right? You work that out. So you might end up with two schools of 800 apiece combined together. And this, this person gets this school all to themselves, and this person, I mean, could this person have three small schools?
Yes, absolutely. That's what we currently do.
Okay.
To divide up their work so that it's equitable. And I, I mean, really, I don't want to undershoot my, what I'm asking for. If we could get one per school, that would be ideal. But the one per two would be such an improvement from where we are now. They're really struggling now, you know, having sometimes four and five sites is very, very difficult to manage. So it would be a vast improvement.
Okay.
So I go back to, in, in a large part, these are about numbers. And the, when I met with Livestream, they said statistically about 2% of your population is in need of some help. That's 860 kids across the district. So do we, do we look at this as, as school-specific or need-specific? I mean, so you may have...
Good point.
I have someone sitting there twiddling their thumbs if there's five kids over here that he told me. I don't know.
So I'm not quite sure what needs they'd be referring to specifically, but if you think about...
These were kids that were at risk. According, according to them, it's like a national statistic that 2% of the population, like in this room, 2% of us are crazy.
But we know...
Right.
But what, but we also know is that one in five children experience mental health difficulties. That's 20%. So I would estimate that the need out there is much, much higher than that. If you think about our MTSS tiered process, our basic curriculum, our basic, everything should be meeting about 80% of the students' needs. That's again, 20%. So, but I get your point.
But is the psychologist really, I mean, so you have the counselor who, I mean, again, there's different levels, I guess, of needing mental support?
Yes, sir.
The 2% I'm talking about are like hardcore, like we need to identify them and to get them help.
Yes.
Which is where the psychologist would come in, right?
Probably even above the psychologist. So the mental health specialists, and then coordination with Livestream, because those students that are at that high, high level of need usually need coordination with outside agencies. But I'm talking about meeting the needs of all of our students at some level. And I do agree, there's a discussion to be had between just this basic assignment based on numbers versus needs. We're doing that with nurses this year, right? We're kind of using them based on the student need. But right now, what it feels like to us is that the need is so grand at every school that they're just running as fast as they can, and they can't, at every school, and they just can't meet the needs. But I do see, I do understand what you're saying about that.
I think that we leave it up to you to, we're making this appropriation, and that if you need to move people, then I'm way okay with that.
Absolutely would. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then just the final slide is just a recap of, a summary of what we just discussed. So you'd have a total available of $16 million, district-wide cost of 2.5, charter school 1.6, district programs of 11.8, and you would have a deficit of $112,000 that you could just adjust with your general fund and continue.
So, so I guess looking at that, seeing a deficit there at the end, and maybe thinking back to this mental health professionals chart, are there any places where you could use an LPN instead of an RN?
It's built in the formula, sir.
I think the RNs are needed to oversee the LPNs.
Right. So I guess the question is, the ratio of how many you've got to, to what?
Yes. And what we're also doing this year, which I have to say has been highly successful, is we're taking RNs and actually basing them in schools as well.
I was gonna ask about that, how it's going.
It is, it's going wonderfully, actually. So I'm glad that you pushed a little bit because it, it really is working out quite nicely. And so in this formula, what we're thinking about is, yes, a certain number of LPNs to be supervised by an RN, but they're all out in the schools. So we are trying to make it as kind of tight in terms of the money as, as we possibly can and get nursing in every school.
So how many, how many LPNs would a RN typically need to?
Well, I, I don't know if there's a standard. Right now, the RNs are supervising not just LPNs, because there are schools that don't have nurses, so they have to take care of those schools, which is a higher need. So right now, each one of the nurses has six, seven, eight sometimes, schools that they're supervising. Ideally, in the model that we built, it's three. It's three LPNs and an RN. So each school has a nurse, and then you have an RN supervising a couple of LPNs. And I got their input on that, and they feel wonderful about that model.
So the mental health counselors, the school-based ones, are, there's one per school. And I kind of thought we were sort of having somebody who was able to work directly with kids, but I'm seeing like coordinate, I'm seeing a lot of sort of, you know, coordinating of MTSS framework, coordinating with Livestream, a lot of sort of administrative-type things.
They'd be student-driven, not administrative. So when I said, for example, coordinate MTSS tiers, it's for mental health only. So we already have that nice structure in place. We already have coaches. We have folks doing academic. We have behavior. And now we would have a mental health side where there'd be dedicated people who would help with prevention efforts, kids who are at risk, and then coordinate with Livestream on those kids who are the 2%, the really...
So are they working with the kids?
Also working with the kids, yes, ma'am.
Are they working on the paperwork for the kids? That's what I'm...
Both.
Oh, okay.
So how, how would their, I guess, ideal or typical, if there is a typical week breakdown, what percentage of the time are they spending on the paperwork versus spending the time one-on-one with the kid?
Well, my hope would be they would be about 75% direct services.
75, three-quarters of the time spent directly with the student.
And then 25% like program, you know, MTSS coordination, some paperwork. But yes, that's our goal, is to have as many of these professionals as possible working in direct services with the kids, whether it's small groups or individual counseling.
So this isn't something that will necessarily, you said the mental health component, which I know behavior is a part of MTSS, but mental health necessarily isn't?
Correct.
And so it's gonna be put in place by this person, and then is the teacher then gonna be in charge of doing interventions, mental health interventions? Like, is this gonna be another layer that's added down? Or is this person also gonna do the intervention, so to speak? I just think about the, like, when you said it that way, that we're adding another component... of MTSS, are, are they going to be pulled out of class for this intervention help? Is, I mean, like, I don't know if we even know the answers to these questions yet, but maybe some unintended consequences would be missing academic subject areas, would be requiring teachers to do interventions that...
So we already have a very nice model where we have a problem-solving team at every school. And so the problem-solving team always includes the teachers, the counselors, the specialists, admin, and they make those decisions about individual cases. So, for example, there might be a tier-two strategy that's in place of three or four of them at the entire school, wouldn't take a lot of problem-solving time to see these five kids are not coming to school. And so they might need to participate in a group activity that could be led by the mental health liaison. So we would be very careful and intentional not to just kind of pile this back on teachers because they don't have the training...
Right.
Yet.
Right.
And so we would be building it around the structure and support for, for them around that.
You said yes, so...
I did say yes.
So we, what we want to do is bring mental health awareness training to all of our professionals in this system.
Well, and let me piggyback just for you guys' information on that. I don't, it's not related to that, but it was something that came up. So we lead, some of our folk, UCF, we have some of our teachers that are currently teaching and they come back once a month just because they want to hang out. I know that sounds, but like with professionals and they kind of debrief and we feed them and then they kind of talk to us and we, sometimes we do PD and sometimes we just talk. And this last time, we just asked them to come in and we said, what are your needs right now? And these are anywhere from first-year teachers to third-year teachers, so we've got a gamut of them. And the biggest thing that they said was how to deal with extreme behaviors. So when we talk about mental health and we talk about extreme behaviors, in our program, I can only simulate so much what a behavior is going to look like. I can give them strategies to deal with behavior and disruptions and those types of things, but until you're in the classroom and you have this, one of these severe behaviors that manifest in your classroom, you don't know how to handle it and every kid is different. So I like the idea, they're asking for that. My, my teachers that I'm closest with are asking for de-escalation, they're asking for how to, strategies on how to get these students back. And that is a component of mental health and it starts young, kindergarten. I mean, we're talking about kindergarten students, right?
Pre-K.
I have some experiences in my classroom.
So I don't necessarily, I like the idea that maybe we're going to give them some training and some strategies on how to get these students off of this manifestation of this behavior.
The earlier we can start, the better. And if there's someone that they can go to at the school who's dedicated to this role, I think that they'd feel supported.
Yeah. And I think as long as you're aware, like, we're hypersensitive about this trickle-down effect, I think that that would be, I know that your staff is feeling like, thank God, you know, this is going to give us some breathing room, so if the teachers could feel that same effect from having these people in the building, I think that'd be a really good thing.
I'm hoping.
Yeah. And then is it, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it, I know that guidance counselors aren't on this and I know we talked about the certification purposes and I know they take, like you said, a lot of their time is taken up. So is this going to, do we have a plan to alleviate some of their involvement in testing, coordinating and in other roles outside of guidance as well? Is that not part of this plan or is that, they're not on the list?
It's, it's difficult. We do, we're trying. But I think one way we decided to do it was to create this dedicated role so that we just don't take this and put it as another thing on top of counselors. So it is hard, they wear a lot of hats.
I do.
Well, and I know they have, especially in high schools, they have a lot of students under their care and therefore they're not able to give all the attention that they would like to, so the administration steps in at times in some places, especially high schools, to make sure the kids stay on track to graduate. And so I would like not to burden them anymore, especially at the high school level, but all the way across. So anything we could do to help alleviate that?
And we agree, and that's really why we came up with this mental health counselor at every school. And then if a, if a counselor really feels passionate about it and they want to transition to this, wonderful. But if they don't, then they can continue their role and then hopefully some will be alleviated as, as some of these things go to that dedicated person. So yeah, we agree.
Okay.
One of the big questions I think the public might have, though, when they see this particular plan, and I don't know if this question's been answered for everybody, but, so when you look at all this, we don't see any capital expenses, right? No school hardening, that we're going to rely on our current capital budget for that kind of thing. Was, were you able to get some clarification on any sort of statutory requirements that limited our funding to purely operational on this or based on the ballot language?
When you look in the statute on the additional millage, it does say for operational, it doesn't say for capital. But I do know that there are some counties that have levied specific for capital needs. So it is possible, but as you see, at point seven-five mil with the purpose...
Well, there's nothing left, so we don't even have to have that conversation, but, but that's just going to be, I think, a piece of dialogue that's going to occur in the public, is going to be, oh, I thought they were going to put in metal detectors or bigger fences or stronger doors or why, why is the district not using any of this money for that purpose? And I think it's important for us to be able to go out and answer that question. But the, so the statutory requirement on this is that it's spent operationally and that usually equates to people, right? Which, which is fantastic because that's the mental health piece that, you know, a bigger fence just doesn't solve the mental health piece.
But would it be feasible for us to have a discussion when we come up to the next year's budget on what some of the needs were for hardening so that whenever we're talking about allocation of funds, that we could have a conversation about some of our priorities as a board? Because we, we talked about several ideas on how to harden, but now they're not on the table, so maybe we bring them up whenever we...
And that would be subject to shade, right?
Right.
Specific details about what we would do, yes, sir.
All right. But yeah, I'd like to have that conversation, too.
I do want to say this, that when we, when I was out speaking about the referendum, it was all about getting ahead of this. And getting ahead of it was with the counselors and mental health and that, that genuinely in the very beginning, from the beginning, we really didn't have dollars, in my mind, to harden. And, but it's much more important to me that we get this mental health component right. And if we do that, the hardening kind of goes away as an issue.
And the SROs are covered, right? We have, we also advertised SROs in here, there's no SROs.
The...
The SROs, we're on the one of the...
Yeah, the, the difference between, right there on the last line?
Oh, I missed, okay.
So we have a different pot of money, that's our safe schools funding, that's specific to the SROs. So what was budgeted in the referendum dollars was the, the amount above and beyond what we have in our safe schools funding, which is why we go back to our legislative priorities. We need to make sure that that money is reoccurring because if it's not, then this conversation takes a very different tone when we come back and have to re-designate these funds to cover that as well, so.
And when we, when, a clarification on this SOR contract succeeding safe schools funding, that's, that's not only the additional contracts that we've taken on, but that would be a contract for schools that were, you know, where the city was not able to, to help us out, where, where the sheriff fell short of the number of people, right? That, that would...
It would, it would cover all of, all of that, yes.
Right.
And if you recall, the, the old safe schools money wasn't sufficient to cover the old contract and the new safe schools money was specifically designated for new. So you could not use any excess on the old, so this will help offset that burden, too.
Got it.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Out of three point oh-three, as team evaluation update, Mr. Farnsworth, Chief of Staff. In his bureau.
All right. Good morning. We're coming to you guys today with an update on team, which is our evaluation process for our instructional personnel. Roughly sixty days ago, at the December, first December board meeting, or October, I apologize, October eighth, we, we went over the full plan, so, which was a much more robust document. And you guys shared some, some thoughts and opinions, ideas and questions about why we do things certain ways. So we wanted to come back to you guys and I have our resident evaluation expert here with me, Mr. Makido Zamora. He's created this presentation to hopefully address some of those questions. Keep in mind, as we were discussing our thoughts earlier, our legislative priorities, this is a necessary evil and if you want to think of it that way, but it, so it's, it's really a really great attempt in collaboration with, with LCA and our instructional representatives to make the best of, of what some might not appreciate about legislation around teacher evaluation. So it's, it's our really heartfelt attempt to, to make things as fair as possible within the letter of the law. So at this time, I'll, I'll hand it over to Mr. Zamora to move through the presentation.
And good morning to all. Again, this is in reference back to October eighth, you asked me to come back to you within sixty days with some information. So this is my attempt at getting that information to you. Okay, this slide shows three things that I'm going to be presenting. You asked to look at FCAT Science Grade Five to be included as part of the student performance calculations for instructional support staff, which is coaches, basically. And you asked for information on career technical education, CTE, looking at industry certification assessment data, be looked upon and see if it can be, something that can be brought into the county as part of teacher-student growth measures. And Dr. Burns, I believe you asked me something to look at science and social studies for high school, so I'm going to talk about all that. Okay, but before I begin, I have to answer a question about the plan. We had extensive discussion on the due date and to answer that, I'm going to say that it was an error on my part. The Department of Education had a deadline to submit seventeen, eighteen changes this October, which is, was quite surprising to me when I had that conversation with the state because to me it was, it's, you will be submitting at the beginning of the year what you're going to do for that year, not lag a year.
So you can make changes to a plan for that entirety, for the year that's already occurred?
As many times during the entire year, and there's many districts, as it was told to me, that do that. They make changes to the plan according to their meetings and with their local unions. And that happened, so the last day to make changes for the prior year was October thirty-first. We did not need to submit any plan at that time, other than you can just update the link on your website. So that was an error on my part and I'm just informing you, you were, you know, it was, it was right. So I did not need to submit a plan at that time. I will be submitting a plan for any changes approved by the team committee for our district moving forward. So, any questions on that?
Thank you for clearing that out.
No, I needed to clarify that. Okay, now looking at FCAT Science. Looking at FCAT Science, Grade Eight is already included in the SPM calculation for coaches at the middle school level, so then I, I pulled all the data, all the evaluation plans for all our instructional support staff. I found there are seventy in the elementary school level. And their assignments are bulleted right there. They're from literacy coaches, CRTs, content area coaches, whether it's math, science or any other coach, deans, intervention support teacher, potential specialist and school testing specialist. Those pretty much are all in the elementary level. Some schools have more than others, but that's pretty much seventy positions. Looking at FCAT Science data, I just brought you, based on the way we calculate, according to our team plan, the blue indicates middle school performance, the yellow indicates elementary. As a school rating, you have the yellow for elementary, performs better, but that's just because of the, there's twenty-five schools. So when you look at FCAT, um, Grade Five, the trend line shows more inclined towards the highly effective side because it moves from effective all the way up to highly effective versus the middle school, the blue bar, the middle, three E means effective, that's the value. You're looking at, there's only eight schools, most of the data performs at the effective range to the exception of one school. Okay? So that's just showing you the data, that's how we calculate it. Now, when I look at, looking at the staff members and I look at their actual student performance measures rating, their average student SPM, their SPM was three point six two, which is highly effective, it's above three point five. When including and weighing FCAT Science into their score and moving the average SPM, it just drops it one hundredth of a point to three point six one. Basically, if I break down that, it's thirty-six decrease their SPM by three hundredths of a point, eight increase by an average of one hundredth of a point, a twenty-six has no change. And basically, when you're rounding and the change happens in the ten-thousandth place in the decimal, it just gets lost. It is insignificant to the score. So when I presented this data to the team committee, we all voted and we're going to include FCAT Science as part of their calculation. So it will be even with middle school, Grade Eight. Okay?
Vote was unanimous.
It was unanimous. It was unanimous.
Is Science already included in the teachers?
In the, yeah, for, for teachers who teach, for fifth-grade teachers, yes. The next slide is CTE. So we, I went back and did more research on CTE and pulling the data from two thousand and eighteen data results, CTE is one of the last data drops that I calculate due to the fact of how they report CTE, how all the vendors report CTE. So it's one of my last, so looking at the data from October, we had eight thousand and eighty-six students with CTE records. Ninety-eight teachers that taught that are matched to those CTE students. Seven thousand and fifty-six unique students. The difference there is because some students take more than one industry certification test. Okay, so when I say eight thousand and eighty-six student records, there might be duplicate lines in that file. Seven thousand and fifty-six is just unique students, some of them, obviously, nine hundred and ten had more than one ICT on file. So they're duplicates. Strictly looking at the district pass or fail on that file, looks like sixty-seven percent report pass, thirty-three percent report fail. Okay? So at first glance, it looks, it looks decent average. Now, when you dive into the data, when you're looking at teacher, teacher evaluations, you got to think that there's a lot of checks that I have to go through before I can count a student for a teacher, for teacher evaluation purposes. When I look at rosters, there's a hundred and seventy-one identified CTE courses. Not all students enrolled, I found when looking at the rosters, not all students enrolled in the CTE course participated in taking an industry certification test. That's to start with. So when I look at the actual rosters, we had enrolled in CTE-related courses fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five students enrolled in those courses, out of which only thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-five can actually meet the criteria for teacher evaluation purposes. That means that students enrolled full year at the school, they haven't changed schools and that they're more, if they're ELL, they're not less than two years in the program. Once I meet that, then I, because we're a roster match district, then I can count that data if it's part of the formula and approved by the team plan. When looking at the industry certification assessment data, out of looking at those seven thousand and fifty-six students, you already know that there's a lot less data than what I have students enrolled. So six thousand seven hundred and forty-five were actually the only students that if I were to use them as part of teacher evaluations, those are the only records that I could use. So not all courses are applicable to taking ICT and there's an error there where it says IE can, it should be CNA. And that was auto-correct, basically CNA is not word and it changed it. I will be updating that on Board Docs. But not all courses are applicable to taking ICT and the reason I, I mention CNA is because you only, you only take the CNA, industry certification test, when you pass CNA one, two, three, and on the fourth one, you take it, the fourth year, you take it. So that's why, that's an example. When you look at it, only forty-eight point three percent of students with industry certification assessment data versus the fourteen thousand, so we, not all students are taking an ICT, which is, when you compare that to FSA, ninety-nine percent test. EOC is the same way, they all test. CTE, the data doesn't cooperate, work the same way. And me, so therefore, when I look at that aspect, okay, so then I'm looking at only an industry certification assessment data, that's only half of it that I can use for those teachers. So moving to the next slide. Out of the a hundred and seventy-one CTE courses, only seven percent of them, which was eight courses, had ninety percent or above of students enrolled participated in taking an industry certification test. And those courses range, I didn't put all the statistics, but some of them had one hundred students, some of them had only had twenty, another course only had sixty, so it's not that they were all packed with students. That only accounted for ten point four percent of students enrolled in CTE courses. So the average... So the average pass rate, when I look at the whole district, out of that 48% that I had data, the average pass rate was 33%, which doesn't look good when I look at just 33%. So does not include 29 courses, which no student participated in taking an ICT. And there are several reasons for that, but that one of them is if they're, if they have to take certain courses before taking an ICT, there's no CTE course that they can take. Presenting this to the team committee, and they voted not to include CTE at this time. And there's many reasons for that, and that's on the next slide.
Excuse me, how do you go from 67% pass to 33% pass?
Because I'm only counting the students, I'm only giving you the percent of the students that I can actually use data for.
Find that other 67%, seems like to me. I mean, how do you, if we have the data here, where did it go to over here?
Because I only have 6,000 students that I'm actually using data for. And the 33% is the average for the students, how they're distributed among teachers. So when I look at their average pass rate for every teacher, it's only 33%. The 67% is the district, not the teacher, the whole district as a whole. So you have teachers that have 70%, 60%, but you have others that have 10, 20. So the average is 33%.
Oh, the teachers.
Of the teachers, the average of the teachers.
And the 60?
The 67 is the average of the district.
Of the district or the children?
The children, the children data, the pass or fail, the children data, the master file.
So only a third of the teachers in that would show as having a passing rate in their class?
Correct. Because you have to, I'm not including teachers on the calculation of the system. I'm only looking at the student data.
Right, right, right.
When I start putting the data into a teacher's calculation, I only attribute it to them once, not multiple times, and it's only based on the teachers that I can actually use data for. So I'm only using 6,000 records, not all 7,000. And I'm only using students that match to that teacher per course.
I apologize, I'm a little slow. So on this slide right here, you had 8,086 kids.
Correct, let me go by.
Blah, 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 blah. Then you had 67% pass and 33% fail.
Correct.
Okay. Then we move over a couple more slides, and we got only 33% passing. How does that?
That's the average for the teachers that...
It's the teachers versus the kids.
Versus the kids.
I don't get it, sorry, I'll just be quiet, because I don't understand it. Y'all can brief me later. I don't see how you can have, I don't see how you can have a 67% pass rate over here among all the kids, right?
That's all the kids, not eliminating any kids.
Okay.
As a group, total.
That's all our kids?
All the kids.
67%.
67%.
And so then, only for the teachers, only 33% of them pass?
No, that's not, what it says is the average pass rate for all courses is 33%. That means I take one course, and I look at all the students that were in that course, and then I have multiple teachers teaching that course. So this, this course got a 70% pass rate with this teacher, but it got a 20% pass rate with this teacher. So when I take all those courses with different teachers and I average them out, it gives me a 33%.
How many CTE programs have multiple teachers? Like, if I'm culinary, it's going to be the same teacher, right?
Not across the county.
Not across the county, sorry, not that.
Right.
Correct, so that's what I'm saying. When I look at the courses and I match students to every course, then to teacher, when I average...
So is it saying that in some cases, the teachers are doing a way better job then?
And so, yeah, there's...
Is that what you're saying to me?
And in average, they're not doing so great.
Yeah, this is terrible.
It's...
Because some teachers are really good, and their results are really good.
Correct. And because not everybody takes a CTE course, it doesn't, there's no way of me increasing that percent. I'm just giving you a straight percentage of what the pass rate average looks like. Not all of them are like that, some are very good.
So a good number of the 67% could be with one or two teachers.
Correct.
Hopefully.
They're in concentrated pockets.
Correct.
But overall, this is not a very good number.
Well, it seems to me, well, maybe it doesn't make any sense to use this as a SPM measurement, but perhaps the greater takeaway is for the college and career folks to look at the greater picture and figure out where are we excelling and where do we have pockets of teachers needing improvement? And figuring out how to drive more students to be successful and take an industry certification exam, right?
Correct. And hopefully, our goal is for every student that participates in a CTE course, if there's a CTE, if there's an industry certification assessment available, it's for them to take it. Not to waive not taking that test.
So they can waive it, so those students are waiving?
Not all of them participate, so they're not taking the test for some reason. I mean, I, there's that specific question that might be something for the, I have somebody who does it expert in the field, they can answer for that department.
If they don't take it, it's counted as a fail?
No, it doesn't count against them at all, because I don't have no data to use for that.
It's not uncommon for districts to not test everyone. And I think the goal and the vision that I understand of that department is to work in that direction, but that number could possibly get worse if all of a sudden that's what you, you're testing kids. But I notice they're worked every day.
I'm kind of looking back at it. She probably has something she wants to die to say.
The whole idea is that we're preparing these kids for the workforce, right? And we're saying that only a third are prepared. Seriously?
Ready to jump out of her chair.
Ms. Ellis, would you like to come up and join us? You can bring a chair to the desk.
Yeah, pull up a chair.
Tell them, make room.
So I had a different interpretation of the 33%, but we'll save that for another time. The biggest part of the, it was the 90% is that the 90, only eight of our courses or our teachers are testing over 90% of their students for the industry certification exam. That, that's kind of the bigger issue, is that we don't, because it's not mandated by the state that 95% or more test for us to get any sort of measure in terms of accountability, teachers get to choose who tests for our CT exams. We're working towards a larger percent of students testing because I think a larger percent of our students could be successful with that. So the biggest kind of takeaway here, I don't understand the 33% either. And I will get that determined and bring that back another time so that we can make better sense of that. I know that the acceleration scores for our district and our schools are as high as they are, which isn't awesomely high in most cases, because of CTE. CTE carries us for acceleration, so the 33 surprises me as well, in terms of how that, and you know, some data can...
Can I ask a clarifying question real quick? But is it 33% of the 48% that qualify? So it's not 33% of all of our students?
It's not.
It's 33% of the 48% that they're looking at?
That's right.
So they're starting, they took the pocket, they decreased it to half, and they're saying that of the half, a third of the half are successful. So it's, if you find a common denominator in that program.
Where are the other ones?
Right, but they don't, the other ones, that's what Kito was trying to say, is that they don't qualify to be counted for the teacher evaluation based on what we use as criteria.
There's a difference between the teacher evaluation piece and student success piece. I think that's, thank you for that language. That's the delineator here. 67% of the students who test pass.
Right.
So actually, that's two-thirds, right?
Yes.
Two-thirds of our students are successful with our industry certification.
That's where the disconnect is for me.
So that, I think this is where you've tapped into the bigger issue, that there are so many teachers who have a number of students not testing, right? So I'm the teacher, and I go, I want my student pass rate to look really good, so I'm going to just take the six of you, you all go in and test, you all are going to pass, I'm going to walk away with 100% or 83%, right? It's going to be a really good rate. Versus if I tell the whole class to test, they just might not be at that point yet.
Well, and there's some students that don't want to test. And we did Google certification, and we told all of our students to take the test, and I'd say half of them took it. So they just didn't take it. So sometimes, too, the teacher could be saying, take it, take it, but the student doesn't have the motivation, or the desire, or the need for an industry certification, so it's not always back on the teacher, not just picking, too. I think there's most, both circumstances. Is there fees? I mean, can it not be part of class? Like, do they have to travel? Like, I know, like, when my dad has people take SurfSafe, they travel, but, so, so what are the barriers?
Yeah.
There aren't barriers. The district pay, you know, the program itself sustains the fees because funding is attached back to that. So, and if a program is starting or struggling, and since we're pushing towards all students testing, that is our biggest push in CTE right now, then from the district funds that I have, I will float a program until they're able to sustain themselves. So that's not a barrier. Transportation, if they do have to go somewhere to test, that's paid for as well. So in terms of those kind of barriers, I have not identified one. It's really about teachers feeling that the students are prepared, and then I think past practice has allowed them to choose. And so we're working towards, and there's not a state mandate that says you have to test, just like the other, the tests that are, that we have in play for accountability.
But can we make it a policy?
We are working on that.
Well, I guess where we feel the crunch, even though it's not a state mandate, we feel the effects of a state result, because when we look at the student, the school grading formula, right? When we see the percentage of students who have, and the acceleration percentage. If that, we're not capturing everybody who could be helping us there, because some students say, I don't want to test even though I pass, right?
Right, and I think that, philosophy-wise, all students should have the opportunity to earn that credential if they've been in the course. And so, from kind of just a philosophy standpoint, we're trying to shift towards, give the student the opportunity, right? They might not be successful the first time, but the other thing with CTE tests is they get three times to take them. They get to take it three times, unlike an FSA or an EOC. So maybe they weren't successful the first time, but that could almost be as kind of a diagnostic, right? To kind of see, so what are they still missing? Like, how can I get them higher the next time and possibly passing the third time, right? So that's another nuance. But it's really, it's really a philosophy shift and just kind of a, I think in the past, from what I understand, teachers are almost kind of penalized in a sense if their pass rates weren't high and the focus was on the pass rate, as opposed to just student achievement overall and having, students having opportunity. And so we're really, we're shifting that. And where we've seen, just from the 16, 17 year to the 17, 18 year, we increased by 2,000 industry certification exams. And more, many more students tested than that. So we did see an increase. We tested more students, and our pass rate stayed the same. So by testing more students, we didn't see this giant dip, right, of students passing. I mean, we tested, I don't remember how many more, 2,000 more passed, and we still stayed at 67%. So we didn't see a dip from that, and we're working with our teachers. Three times a year, we pull them together with their cohort groups to have conversations about, you know, what are we doing, how can we improve, kind of conversations, so...
Right, because, I mean, I'm the first person to not, you know, push testing. But I feel like we are preventing these kids from having a potential opportunity, building their resumes. You know, just having another line on your resume can be helpful.
Most important thing for the career and technical is, when these kids come out, there's an expectation that they've mastered whatever level. And if we started out, and I just ran the numbers real quick, 6,745 kids, 48.3 took the test, and only 33 passed, that's 1,000 kids total that came out of the program. Expectation that they've mastered. And the integrity of the program is for the employers to sense that when they come out. Am I wrong with where I'm going? I am?
More than a thousand students passed.
A thousand out of the 3,000 that were eligible.
1,000 of the 3,000 passed it.
They're eligible?
For the teacher certification, or for the teacher evaluation purposes.
I didn't break that down that specifically.
No, that's what I just did. That's why I was just saying that when you begin to run this through, that's a pretty, like, a terrible number.
Of the 3,000 teachers who have courses that are eligible?
For 3,200 kids, if 33% pass, that's 1,079.
But it's only in eight courses, right?
Out of 171. But it's an industry certification where there should be an expectation that they would have.
I agree, it's bousy.
Correct, so the next piece of that, to answer your question, would be to look at which of those courses they are. What, because I don't, I don't know which courses those are that qualify to make that 33% and to dig deeper for you to see where we're lacking in those areas. Right, so we could do that. Overall, we're seeing success in CT. So I don't want it to sound like we're failing in CTE because overall, we've seen an increase in industry certification pass rate, not pass rate passes, from 16, 17 to 17, 18. We anticipate even more this year in 18, 19.
And we've seen an increase in the number of students that have taken the test as well.
Number of taking tests. So overall, we're looking at increases overall. So I don't want the way this data is presented in the lens of teacher evaluation to make CTE progress look...
Can we come back and discuss it then at another time?
I can look at that deeper with his numbers from that route. But it's two separate things. CTE, pass rate certification, student success, and teacher evaluation. Like, they're really two separate buckets.
But the numbers are the number, for the number that gets it passed. That's not going to change.
Not for those eight courses.
Not for those eight courses. I'll find out what those are. Well, it's more than eight, but...
I'd rather bring you the data forward so you can see it. It's, I don't want you getting confused on the 33% because when I look at that, I look at courses, I look at it, I'm only using it for teacher evaluation purposes. So I look at every course, I do an average for everybody who taught that course, and then I take all the averages and average them out, and that's the 33%.
The only thing I would share is, is that because of the way that this looks, that I would have shared that like a, there should have been an alarm going off at your desk and then be able to have some kind of explanation of what's going on.
It is an alarm at a teacher evaluation level. I wouldn't be able to...
It's pretty much an alarm at our kids' level, too, just saying.
So then, that was a unanimous no?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
For teacher evaluation purposes.
For teacher evaluation.
But this is something that I think should be revisited when we get, hopefully, we will get our numbers higher. Our pass, not our pass rates, but our, yeah, our participation rates higher. And then we can come back and look at this when we have 100 and something courses that are actually being included.
There's some other difficulties that come along with, because of the wide variety of testing that occurs there. There's some other difficulties that come along with using it also. So it's not just, oh, we're not, this percentage doesn't look good, so we're not going to use it. There's some other issues, and that's what, as he wraps up this...
That's the other part, like, some vendors report a score only, some vendors report only pass or fail. So assigning metrics for highly effective, effective becomes challenging. Some report only part of a test, and then you have to group all those parts together to award that certification test. So it's not, it's not black and white, that it's like, it's not like FSA or EOC, that you get levels, and you can actually work with a scale and form a scale of highly effective all the way to unsatisfactory. Not with CTE data. There's not such a score that I can use, and some I can and some I can't.
And that point goes, speaks perfectly as to why the state system is such a bad one. Because here we end up with teachers being evaluated for subjects that they don't teach because we can't produce reliable data here. Because we're going to be trying to use tests for purposes for which they were not created.
With CT...
You should be our lobbyist.
It's, it's a challenge. With industry certifications, a challenge when it comes to creating a scale for teacher evaluations. And then you have the question of multiple teachers providing instruction. You have multiple teachers that teach CNA, but the only one, the last one, is the one that gets credit for the industry certification, so...
Or not credit.
And they're not the only one, I'm just giving you an example. The other piece was high school instructional science and social studies. Looking at high school, and Dr. Burns, I believe you had a question about looking at social studies and science. Well, I wanted to put a slide to, so you can first explain how I calculate, how the team manually takes a calculation. We look at rosters, then we look at position assignment for the teacher. A social studies teacher would get, if they teach in high school, grade nine and 10, they'll get the ELA score attached to them. If they teach a US, US history EOC, they will get that attached to them. And if they have students that take either PERT, ELA, or math, or PSAT, or SAT, or ACT, there is a scale that I follow for that, and they get a rating for all those pieces. And together, it's a score that gets aggregated for their student performance measure. The same thing goes for science, but instead of US history, it's EOC biology. The same thing goes for AP, and if you notice, the only difference is that if they teach an AP course, they get that attributed to them. If they teach an EOC assigned courses, like, if they're strictly an AP teacher, then I can only go with that particular scenario. Elective areas, which I find some teachers fall under the elective area range, they have APs, rosters assigned to them, then they follow the same thing as social studies and science, or FSA, ELA, grade nine, 10, and then PERT, PSAT, SAT, and ACT. Everything gets weighted. So they might have students that get more data on one particular area than others, than others. Before I move on to the next slide.
So each of these bullets, they're not weighted equally, or are they? So each of these bullets, they're not weighted equally, or are they?
No, it's way, it's based on student count, how much data there is for that bullet.
So if I, if I'm a, a science teacher or social, I don't pick one, and I, and I've got ELA and math as part of my evaluation, is, does one of those get more weight over the other?
Depending if, when I get all the student assessment data, it gets weighted based on number, the amount of student assessment that I have per area.
So have you had more college and career bound kids?
Correct.
There's more weight onto the SAT and ACT?
Correct. An 11th, 10th, 12th usually have that. Now, the SAT and ACT, a lot of high school students tend to repeat the test, so what we do is we take the highest score. If they have multiple takes, we take the highest score to calculate.
Is, and the, the Algebra I exam, EOC?
I'd include math, but math is the same thing. If I were to put math teachers, they follow the same trend. It would be FSA, um, well, I don't.
Got you, I got it.
It's the same trend, only they will have EOC Algebra I.
Hmm.
So now, when.
Oh, now you, it sounded like you had this revelation, I wanted to hear it.
No, it's just very odd that, that the number of children that take the test weights it differently because then it's, it's going to be if you have more college and career bound kids, college bound kids, you, your SAT, ACT scores count more than EOC biology.
I'll give you, let me give you, let me explain with a different example. If you have a 10th grade math teacher and they have students that took already Algebra I, they might have only one roster of Algebra I, taking it for the first time, then the rest of them take PERT. Then if I only weighted for the Algebra I, the majority will be based on only one roster of students versus PERT who has more because that's an alternative for getting that credit for graduation. So it's weighted according to every piece of what they take because.
I mean, that's why they, they can't figure out what, how their scores work. I mean, it's just confused, it's, it's kind of confusing and kind of random. I mean.
It, it's, it's not random, it's based, based on whatever data their students participated.
So if I, if I teach biology, I'm, I'm, I'm going to get the ninth and 10th grade ELA FSA results in there, as well as all these other ELA and math results, and of course.
If they participated in that, yes.
If any of my students participated in that. So, so what percentage of my evaluation would be actually based on biology?
It's weighted.
Compared to, so it might only be like 10%.
And it could totally vary across the district.
Right.
Correct.
So, so one biology might be, one biology teacher might have 10% of their evaluation actually based on biology, whereas another one might actually have like 30% based on biology.
Because they might have only one roster of biology versus a teacher that teaches five periods of biology.
But also if they're at a school that has less college bound kids.
Correct.
They will have a higher percentage of their biology score than if they're at a school with a ton of college bound kids where all of their kids take the ACT, SAT, so then their percent biology score will be much lower. So it is, and that, that's what I mean by random.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, I know it's, it's a formula, but it's also just, it's not consistent across the district.
I will say this, biology is not a, a teacher, you will not have a teacher taking it, having a, a rating for SAT or ACT because most of the SAT and ACT data is 11th and 12th.
Yeah.
So a biology teacher will never see a rating in that portion unless it's a student that decided to take that, which usually a ninth or 10th grade student will have PERT and PSAT, depending on where they are on their schedule.
Right. So, so if, if I'm this biology teacher, so potentially like 80% of my evaluation would be based on ELA and math and like 20% is based on biology, right?
Not 80, okay, let me start by saying student performance measures only count for 35%.
Uh, right, no, 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 I mean, I mean of my 35%, to get to that number.
Out of that 35%, it could potentially, it fluctuates depending on the, the number of periods that teacher teaches biology.
I don't like this at all.
So if I teach biology every period, and I don't know how many of them there are that do that, but let's say hypothetically I did, would my score be entirely based on biology or I would still have the FSA results in there in the PERT?
You will have the FSA results and biology aggregated together.
And, and PERT and PSAT would be in there too. So when all that comes to be at the end of the day, how, I, I guess I'm, I'm just unsure of how much ELA was factored into my student performance rating versus how much biology was factored in there. It seems like if I teach biology all day long, oh gosh, why is biology not carrying the heaviest weight of my overall student performance measurement rating?
Can I interject? I think it might also be helpful to know that once you get all the data, so once he gets all these bullet points for every single student, then this isn't even where the score comes from. So there's a standard deviation component where the rating comes from. So if you, if you look at your standard deviation model, and one of the benefits to including multiple assessments is that then you're coming closer to the mean. And so again, you guys, I, I can guarantee you that every conversation that's having, we're having right now, has been had for the last seven years, over and over again. It happens every year in the team committee, it happens every meeting, this is not, this is, we just spoke about our legislative priorities and how the system doesn't work. And so trying to make sense of it will make you go crazy. I'm just going to tell you that. It makes teachers go crazy, it makes us go crazy, it makes everybody here go crazy. When we factor in all of those scores into the standard deviation model, 90% or higher of our teachers are coming out effective, which is what we're trying to do to make an inequitable system equitable. We can't, we don't even have the means locally to give extra dollars to a teacher who teaches primarily biology and does an outstanding job. We don't even have that ability to make those decisions. So I don't know if that helps to know that, that each of those scores then factors with a standard deviation model. Literally, you have to be an outlier on the top or on the bottom to have any kind of an adjustment in your score. And that's what the, the, you know, you've got to look at the ends to the means, and I'm not saying it's okay, like I'm not standing here saying this is a perfect system. It's never going to be a perfect system. I, we do need to continuously consider what we include and what we don't include, but the end result is always that, you get a ranking of highly effective, effective, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. To get unsatisfactory or highly effective in some instances, it almost takes an act of God. And our teachers are trying to be treated fairly in a system that's not going to be fair. I just, we can sit here and talk for hours, they've talked for hours, the committee's talked for hours, it's not going to get better until there's a change in the system from our education people at the top.
It's not, and I understand philosophically, it looks like it's, it's, may not be positive or it's not fair, but when you look at the results on the next slide, it doesn't seem to come to the disadvantage of the teacher because when I, when we complete calculating, all science teachers, 65% of them are highly effective. All social studies teachers, 68% of them are highly effective, and the ones that were not were effective. Elective area, 76%. So as crazy as the model looks, it is not coming on the, it's not penalizing teachers per se, or it's, it's not unfair. It's really, it's trying to do the best thing with what I have, with what we have at hand. Fifty-six percent of high school classroom teachers, their student performance measured, 35% was highly effective using that system. I'm not sure, Ms. Dr. Burns, if any.
It's just so, I mean, I, you know, I mean, and then you run it, so you run it through a program and then it like averages it out basically, and then we get, I mean, I don't think that necessarily having highly effective, high, highly effective, is it, I mean, does it correlate at all to what they're teaching? I mean, it, it just seems so completely like if I was teaching biology, like why bother doing a good job? Like, I mean, if, like, I, I see why teachers get so frustrated with the system when there's one, two, three, four, five other factors that they have no control over.
Yeah, I'm, instead of planning biology lessons, I'm going to spend my time praying that the ELA teacher did a good job, right? That, that's, that's the wackiness.
Well, we can give everybody a test, you guys.
No, 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 no.
We can write an assessment for every single course we teach at this district and give them a pre and a post, right? I, I mean, that's, we have talked about that. We had this conversation in 2011 on the phone with DOE. You want us to give a kindergartner a test based on PE standards, one of the standards was that they can throw a ball with their, with their, with their, whatever, their arm that's the strongest. I'm like, we just going to line them up and have them throw a ball and we can check that one out? Like what in the world do you want us to do? We even talked about getting a Wii system. Because I mean, there's like swimming standards, y'all. It's just, we can't write an assessment for every single course we teach. And when we spoke to, I sat in people's offices and said, you are requiring us to test every single teacher in our district. They're like, no, it's, no, we're not, that's a district decision. What? Well, then that leaves us using FSA reading and math for biology, or physics, or swimming, swimming. We should build swimming pools. That's what I get out of this conversation.
I'm over that second.
Is that a vote, Mr. Johnson?
Only there's a water slide.
Just checking the chair weight down there.
Lazy river.
He said, remember, we do not take motions or votes in this meeting.
Anyway, it's very frustrating. That's where we go back to and then we come back to, we want to evaluate fairly and the only way to do that is to give them a test. And then we go common formative assessments or common summative assessments and then we don't, it's just a giant mess is what it is.
No, I, I mean, I, I think every single point you said was, was spot on, you know, there's not a single thing you can argue with. It, it is really just inherently a bad system. And, um, you know, I think, I think maybe the, the part of me that, that has any sort of struggle is that, yes, we have a system design that, that ensures that, um, you're not going to be at a disadvantage, right? Because we have enough ways to.
Right.
Manipulate the numbers. Massage, manipulate the numbers to, to make sure that, that it's not going to be held over you. But, you know, I guess just philosophically looking at the, the point of it is, here, I, I just can't believe we're evaluating teachers on subjects that they don't teach. You know, that's a, and, and that might be the most significant portion of their evaluation of that, or, or that.
And it's not even consistent across the county.
Yeah, that's right. Thank goodness I taught biology at this school versus that one because, you know.
Well, and I would say maybe the way that we, I, as a teacher, I think that's where it hits, is that when I get my results back and see that my performance measure said that I didn't do a good job, I think that's where it hurts the most. So that's, I think that's where we're trying to capture this positive data so that we can say you made an impact on kids and that, I, in the best way possible, rather than this evaluation system that we know doesn't work. You know, we can keep saying that, but at the end of the day, when you get your paper back, if it says you didn't do a good job, that's where it kind of goes. Well, I've worked all year and this is what I get as a result, so.
All right. Cool. Anybody have anything else?
I'm not sure if I answered what you wanted me to bring to you with science and social studies.
Well, you answered it, I just.
We just don't like the system.
Yeah.
She just didn't like what you brought.
You did great work, Mr. Zamora.
That's right.
I'd like bringing spinach to the table and you don't like it.
But you're going to eat it before I get up.
After as much bacon as you want.
Next.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Until next year.
That's right.
We'll have the same questions and the same conversation. Because I, as you said, it's been going on for seven years. When he brought it to you before, I said, this team committee has done a great job of trying to make something so fair, something fair that is so inequitable.
We'll just word it differently next year.
All right, moving on to 3.04, fee collection recommendations on naming of school sports facilities. Mr. Tom Mott, Director of Internal Audit.
Thank you. I'm not sure about the title of that.
Which part?
The fee collection.
Okay.
Okay. My, my presentation is coming back to the, to the board with, um, uh, my research and discussions that I've had with some other school districts on, uh, naming. And from what I understood was, is you wanted me to look into the, um, possibility of Lake County schools going further into the naming rights, possibly getting into the ability to collect some revenue dollars by doing that. So that's, that's how I looked at this. So real quick overview, um, I'll just kind of go the Florida statutes and then go right into what I found out from my research into public schools. And, um, I did a little research into what universities and colleges are doing. I also had the opportunity to sit down with a private school in Orange County to kind of see what they were doing. And then came up with some other ideas for, for fundraising that would bring in revenue. And then I thought it might be nice to just kind of look at some positives and negatives that I saw while I was doing my research. And then, um, came up with some recommendations as far as if we want to go this route and get further into this, uh, what should we do as a school district to make, to possibly Florida statutes, um, the Florida statutes does give the school district the right to do naming and renaming of the district facilities. And that's Florida statute 1,001.434. With that, and then I also just went ahead and noted, we already have a, a naming of school facilities policy, 8.54 currently, so those things are in place. Okay, now I did a little research first by Googling what Florida school districts were doing and, and who was doing it. And two came up with some good information. Brevard County first came up, uh, and then I also saw Lee, Lee County come up. So I started to dive into these two school districts by visiting their websites, finding out the name of someone to call and contact at those. Brevard County, I, I was able to reach out and talk to Debra Foley over at Brevard County Schools, and she's the marketing director there. She's been in place for about six years. One of the things she did when she came on board, uh, the first year wasn't a full year, so she came on board about halfway through, and she noticed they were putting out the school planner, and, um, she saw that the back page was blank, so she asked them to hold up the printing of it, and, and she took some time to reach out to some, some businesses and she was able to, to raise about $30,000 to, to put advertising on the back page of that planner. She, it, it, she felt it was very successful. I think she only had one parent feedback negative about putting the advertising on the planner and their student carrying that around. So it was, she thought it was very successful. After that, what she did, her first thing was to join the Brevard County Chamber of Commerce. She wanted to connect with the businesses. She told me that, uh, it would probably be hard pressed for me if I reached out to any business in Brevard County that hasn't heard from her or knows her pretty intimately because she spends a lot of time on the phone talking to the businesses. Another thing that she did was she created Pi in each of the Brevard school, uh, schools, and that's Partners in Education. These are the people that help her, um, get the advertising and, and working with the, uh, different businesses in their areas, um, together working. And what she does is she has a solid, um, standard operating procedures so that they all know how to, uh, work with each of the businesses and how she would like them to work with each of the businesses. And then they all know that the, the dollars are going to come into, to unrestricted funds and those are going to be shared out proportionally with the schools. And then they also, she sets up a little bit of money in a public relations fund and that's kind of, to kind of get everyone together to build the morale and the camaraderie amongst the, the schools and that that are working in the Partners in Education. She felt that those have, uh, worked out really well, uh, over time. And one of the things that she said is it took some time to get this up and going, so it took about two to three years before they became profitable in what they were doing here in, in this effort. I asked her about naming, I asked her about naming rights on schools and, and if they were doing anything to, um, raise funds for, for new construction, and she said it would be a great idea if they were doing any construction. So at this point, they haven't because they're not doing any construction. So they're not doing anything to raise funds for, uh, naming rights in their, in their buildings. Not really making the projector. Next school I reached out to was Lee County. First I went to their website, they had a ton of information, probably the only school district that I saw that has, uh, this much information on their website. And what they've done is they've partnered with Tebow, uh, and she explained, when I, when I finally reached out to her, she finally explained to me that Tebow and Associates, he, the person that, that runs this Tebow and Associates used to work in, um, the Tampa area for a school district and then went out on his own to create this marketing effort. And he actually. And he actually, I guess he goes to conventions and places where he can raise funds. So he likes to put all the school districts that he works for kind of like into a pool and try to use that as leverage, I guess, to work with larger businesses, hospitals and medical centers. And that's how this organization has been successful for the school districts. One of the other things, and you'll see other things that they've done on here, but one of the other things that they've created, one, one of the things that Tebow gave them was information on traffic. They gathered that information. They were able to use that information. They went out to a local marketing company in Lee County and created these flyers, and there's actually a couple of them here. And you can see, it's, it's got some really great information on number of venues at stadiums and number of drive-bys, the people in cars that drive by the facilities, number of people attending the different events. So that's how they came up then with the marketing dollars, you know, or advertising dollars that they would generate for businesses and that, that would like to, to, I don't know, that, that were, like to advertise in the football stadium, or baseball stadium, or, or soccer, et cetera. So there was a few of these, and they, they went into the inside to the basketball, and they also, you'll see the venues here for the arts with the, with the media and the, and then there was another school, but this was not obviously in Florida. And, but I talked to Brevard and Lee, and they're doing the same thing, where it, within the games, they can get around the goalposts, they can get wraps, the, you know, on the sidelines, they get information. They can get advertising dollars on, on some of the different things that are being done there. And then, then using the newsletters and websites for raising money as well. So these things we, we've seen from there. So talking with Lee County, Kaleigh Roden is the marketing director. She's been there for three years. One of the things she said is that it started out as part of their communication department efforts, and it kind of just kind of waffled in there since it wasn't their full-time job. You know, it was just something that they were given to do on top of their other communication efforts for the school districts. Really wasn't going anywhere. So she says it's taken about three years to get this thing up and going. She, she felt they would be turning the corner next year to be profitable. And I talked to her about, did they have standard operating procedures? And she said, "Not at first," but she said it probably should have been the first thing that they've done, but they've implemented some standard operating procedures that the schools are, are using now to, to run this effort in Lee County. I didn't call any colleges and universities, but I did. There's, there's more information on colleges and universities out on the website, out on the internet than there, there was for school districts. One of the things I found from reading a lot of the information is, is, you know, their approval process either lies at their board of trustees, or board of regions, or their ethics committees. You know, they run through contributions, either significant, you know, generous find, you know, that's how they, they designate what they are. I saw that to get naming rights on, on buildings, or soccer fields, or, or general areas within the college and university, you know, it ranged from anywhere from 25% donation to 30, 50, all the way up to 100%. And then the time length of that seemed to be tied around, you know, some kind of memo of understanding with the individual or letter of agreement that they signed. So it could be that they have to give an annual donation, or the fact that, you know, if they gave 100% of the building, that that would be a lifetime-type agreement. And then, and then, of course, you know, we all know from watching many college football games and that on TV, you know, there's plenty of naming rights agreements for a lot of the stadiums in the college area than there are at, at the school district level at this time. And a lot of those agreements were anywhere from three to five, up to 20 years. So. Okay. As I said earlier, I, I had the opportunity, this was a private high school down in Orlando. I sat down with the alumni director, just kind of get an idea of what they're doing. He told me that they do 50% of the construction will get your lifetime naming rights on the building. So they've got a couple opportunities that they're working on right now, and they're trying to get the naming rights on, on those buildings by finding, obviously, someone to give up the, that kind of contribution. Then after they get the naming rights on the building, then they want to go down in and sell the different classrooms and, and other areas within the building, potentially you get naming rights on that. Again, they go 50% of the cost of construction on that. Obviously, you can see there, if they could sell out the whole building, they would get 100% of the cost of construction. Advertising, whether it's at the football stadium or anywhere else in, in the school, is, is all negotiated, and it's, it's on an annual basis. How they do it, they have a president there, and that, that's the president's main job at that school, to go out and, and work, work the crowd, so to speak, work the, work the alumni to, to raise funds for the school. And there, he's working plans for anywhere from five to 10 years out, as far as what's going on, on that campus. And the principal also helps. And there's an alumni committee, and then, obviously, the gentleman I sat down with, he's the director of the Alumni Association. A lot of that comes out of his office. How they do it is they focus on the 25 deep pockets, those alumnis, they identify them, they work them. You know, that's smoozing them with golf and dinners and et cetera, et cetera. So they're obviously working them. They stay, they stay, they stay quiet on social media or any other type of campaigning out to the other alumnis. And then after the deep pockets have been worked in, obviously, then they go out to the rest of the general alumni and, and work them as well. And then they just do a, a general social media campaign. So some other ideas for fundraising. I, I know one of the things that was brought up at, that night was, you know, doing things like memorial bricks from alumnis, bless you. You know, another thing I thought of was, you know, maybe plaques for athletics, you know, football, you know, baseball, you know, throughout the school. There could be memorial solicitations made to honor former high school classes, local business advertising on school buses. We've got the LED signs out at our schools. We could do, potentially do more advertising on there, especially with, once you get the traffic flow information. Sponsorship for school uniforms. You know, same thing with athletics and band and other non, non-state funded activities. And then scholarships, you know, if we could do more scholarships and naming them after the donors. As with anything, there's positives. Obviously, the positives are the money we'd be raising, and some of those, you know, like I said, I, I saw where Lee County raised almost $300,000 and $115,000 for, for naming of football stadiums. Brevard also has done the same. They've, they've, they're getting about $20,000 from FIT for naming rights on the three-year options for, three years and two-year option for the naming of the Palm Bay High School Football Stadium. Then in Houston, there was a, an article where a high school there got their naming rights. So obviously, naming rights on football stadiums seems to be very profitable, at least in, in larger dollars. Obviously, the smaller dollars, things aren't being reported as much on the internet. Some of the drawbacks, you know, one of the things, the drawback that I saw was a newspaper journalist kind of, you know, wasn't true, but just kind of brought it up, where, you know, do we really want to go the route where, you know, we're getting our high schools named after Best Buy, and then next thing you know, Best Buy wants them to wear, you know, their blue shirts and khakis? You know? And then, you know, the Chick-fil-A, you know, Chick-fil-A plus, you know, elementary school. So, you know, there's some drawbacks into it as far as, you know, corporate sponsors getting involved. However, you know, that's where some of the larger dollars can come from. Oh, and then, you know, some of the negatives could be, you know, if there's a, you know, dedication to someone that's living, and then they get into trouble, some kind of legal, you know, you want to make sure that those letters of agreements, and I saw that in the colleges and universities, where those letter agreements definitely spelled out, you know, if you get into financial problems, you know, your name's coming off right away. So it was definitely written in there. So that's something that has to be considered. My recommendations, I, I kind of came up with two. You know, obviously, if we want to go this route, I really would recommend that we hire someone to drive it. So, you know, looking at them, you know, investing in hiring a, a marketing director. You know, that, and then that marketing director coming in, establishing the policies and procedures. Because one of the things you've got to make sure of, and it's the third bullet point, is, you know, coordinating and making standard operating procedures across the board for all the schools. But then we also want to make sure, you know, that we're not crossing the line with anything that the foundation's doing, because, you know, you don't want to be working, you know, from both angles and getting, you know, the different businesses upset. You know, they're working very well with the foundation, and along comes three or four schools, you know, beating on their doors for money as well. So, you know, definitely getting something there. And then, you know, going into it to know that, you know, it's going to take a couple years to get this thing up and running, so, you know, we're going to have to put some dollars into it on the front end before we realize dollars on the back end, whether that'll be year two or three to get that out of there. And then, you know, you know, the marketing director, I think, would be, be great to, to work with the schools to get the alumnis groups, you know, better formulated and up and running, kind of like the private school is doing with their alumni associations, because a lot of money can come from those, especially with, he pointed out, with former athletes. A lot of money comes into the private school from those, uh, former athletes that happen to make it a career, so to speak, make it to the professional level. And then, obviously, top business leaders, obviously, to bring in a lot of money to the, to the private school. Another recommendation, just to see, you might want to see how well the community views this whole naming rights and, and raising money. Might want to do a, a survey, just to get a little bit more feedback on, on how, how it would be received out in, in the community. You might want to either do it as all as one, or maybe break it down into three separate type surveys, one to the businesses, one to the community in general, and maybe one to this, our schools, our, our own employees, and see, see what their feedback and thoughts on, on it as well might be, because they're going to be out there pounding the turf as well, carrying their bag of bricks, or whatever it may be, to sell. So with that, any questions?
Anybody? Thank you, sir.
Great.
All right. Moving on. We're at Board Comments. Mr. Mathias?
I just want to encourage everyone to get to Lake Square Mall, look at the Christmas trees and bet on them. You have until December sixth, sixth, and they'll be awarded. You get the tree ornaments and, and the fact that you know that you have helped a very important program, our arts and all of our schools.
All right. Ms. Luke?
I don't, I just wanted to say thank you to Tom. I know that was a lot of work for us to consider as we go forward with naming. I know there's more discussion, have you had it from the board on that? I think it's been a long day, but just even talking about going forward with a survey or something would be something I think that we should, we should address for sure. So that's it.
Yeah. Well, you know, in Mr. Mathias' spirit of holiday cheer and goodness, I think one of the best ways to, to get in the spirit of the holidays is to check out what's going on at your local school. This week, I had the opportunity, with an invitation, to go visit Windy Hill Middle and their production, their holiday on the hill. It was, it was quite a fantastic showcase of all the various programs and elective offerings and clubs that they have at the school. They all played a role in this. The weather was fantastic. It was nice and cool. So the culinary team with their, their makeshift food truck, it was fantastic, you know, because I guess our risk management people say a bunch of middle schoolers and a real food truck would be kind of hairy. They have a cutout of a food truck and to simulate the experience for them, and man, their line for hot chocolate was just crazy. And the, the line for the cookies that they had decorated was, was also extraordinary. The cookies themselves, they looked fantastic. Real shout out to the, the power choir that delivered this incredible performance in the breezeway, and just the way the, the, the sound echoes and reverbs there, it, it just gives you goosebumps listening to that, that incredible holiday music. So, well done. And I know a bunch of other schools are having their own versions of showcases to get people in the spirit and various choir and band performances. Great way to enjoy the holidays. One of my favorites.
I don't have much, other than went to FSBA last week. I will, sorry. He mentioned a marketing director, and one of the presentations was marketing our CTE programs further. I need to actually look, it was how Orange County does it, and they seem to do a really nice job, but I need to actually pull up the presentation. I'll try and send it to you. But it was really interesting how they marketed it, so I'll try and get that information out to the board. I'll send it to Natalie. I mean, we could talk about it when we talk about the, the other naming. That's all I have.
And as Mr. Mathias said, if you haven't been out to the mall to see the Christmas trees, they are grandly decorated and unique in some cases. And so give an opportunity there to put a bid in for one and take it home in time for Christmas. Also, as Mr. Dodd noted, that some schools around doing different things for the holidays. And tomorrow night, to various high schools, chorus and band is doing their Christmas performance. And also tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, don't forget, board members that are able to be there, the SA finalists is at Daily Commercial. So I've been allowed to go there and, and escape and get to, to various high schools, so I'll be in and out of there quickly. But we want to be there if we can to let the SA winners know how much we appreciate their opportunity, that they're going to represent us in Tallahassee. That's all the comments I have. Superintendent?
Ms. Allison, Mr. Zamora, would like to come and give you just a closing point of clarification really quickly.
Did y'all go out there and duke it?
A little bit.
Remember, you're on camera.
I went back to the office with Ms. Allison and looked at the data file that I ran, all the numbers. I picked up the 33 from the, from a different column, taking into account the, all the district data. So if a student was enrolled in the class, and they, and some of them participated and took the industry certification, so I did the percentage based on enrollment. The true percentage, based on the actual ones that actually took the test, is 71%, not 33% passed.
Okay.
So I want to clarify that, because it was a big difference, which matches the 60.
A little bit.
The 33% is based on enrollment, the 71% is based on students that actually took it and actually were qualified to be able to be counted for teacher evaluation purposes. That's why the 71 is higher than the 67. The 67 takes a look at the whole data, the 71% is looking only at students that qualify for teacher evaluation purposes.
Okay.
So I didn't want that lingering, and it, it was true, it was, and it was all my part. It was, it might, it was going to drive me insane, so I, we went back quickly and looked at it. Okay?
Thanks for the clarification. Mr. Attorney? All right? No more? We're adjourned.